And start with our work session agenda for the Hood River County Board of Commissioners on October twentieth, twenty twenty five at four forty seven. We're going to start with a presentation from the East Fork Irrigation District on their project that they're doing on Fur Mountain Road. Would you please come and introduce yourself and?
Yeah, do you want me to come up here?
Yes, please.
Sit, stand.
You could.
The cartwheel before you sit down.
This just flip slides. Oh, this is my mind. I won't touch it. So I have a small presentation, but I'll introduce myself. I'm Steve Pappas. I'm the district manager of East Fork Irrigation District. And currently we're doing a big project on the east side of our district. It's roughly seven point one miles of open canal and a couple of sub laterals that we're piping. We're in process right now. Several road crossings that we're doing. We've been working with the county to although so if you catch up, I just got a little few little slides that'll show you what we're doing in Fur Mountain. I think everybody's here mainly about Fur Mountain, but I'll kind of give you the gist of what the project is. And so right now we have open canals. We waste about eighteen CFS of water that we pull out of the East Fork River. We want to keep that in there. We've worked with the watershed group, FCA, several agencies to bring back the watershed in that area back to its natural state. The canal's been there for, I don't know, almost two hundred years. So it's been part of a conveyance for the county for stormwater. So we are doing, we got grants to pay for this doesn't didn't cover stormwater. So I got funding from private agencies to do that and some state funding to do the stormwater. So the project could keep going and that's right now is up on Wells Drive, that picture and that. So as we're piping and removing the canal, you can flip it one more time if you want, please. We've done quite a bit of stormwater on Wells Drive. It's always been a bad area where mud is washed down even with the canal. The canal is actually on the west side of Wells Drive, but this it needed a good facelift, the county's conveyance of that. So we already have done quite a bit there to take that water and then divert it back down and where it'll spread out like in like a spire web through the watershed group or the watershed of the east side and then eventually settle down and drain into Neil Creek, which is a protected stream. Salmon still had all kinds of fish and then by removing the canal, what it did is it impacted, it impacts the stormwater. So we had to do a hydraulic G study and everything of hundred year floods. What's going to happen with this canal? Determine places where we needed to keep the canal, divert the water to get it into the county system, but where the county could handle the water and where it couldn't, then East Fork has upgraded that. And one other place is on Thompson Road, which anybody that's familiar with the east side, every winter it's a mud mud hole. And so we basically replaced all the stormwater. It had an eight inch pipe with like a catch kind of makeshift screen at the very top that the county would capture that wire to go down to Thompson and just kind of split out, but it had failed. So we put in, we're putting in a twenty four inch pipe. It's already piped in now at the bottom and we're working our way up to the canal to take that. And then basically through the whole canal, as there's natural drainage, we're also putting in dozens of stormwater basins and then we're but we're actually kind of doing a dual purpose. We'll in the summer, we'll capture that water for the animals. And that's a big question. Everybody, how you what about the animals? Where are they going to get their water? And so we're being sensitive to that. And then in the winter, we'll open those up and it'll convey down, but we have stormwater. We're basically putting culverts and stuff under our new forty two inch HDB pipe that's going to run irrigation water. But so that's all been in play and designed. And then I think the main reason, you could flip it again if you want. I think the reason most people are hearing the questions is how is this impacting Fur Mountain? And the Fur Mountain road crossing our canal right now goes under a bridge on Fur Mountain. This is a picture of the project of what we're going to be doing. And so right now that road where our canal is, there's a pretty rickety bridge, just a little bit of guardrail and it hits hard in like a really sharp turn, but it also narrows way down pretty much almost to a one lane. So what we're doing, we have to run pipes through this. We have to cut this road. And that road will be widening about ten feet to the to the good side, the south side, and then about two hundred feet of guardrail being put in right now. I think there's maybe thirty or forty. It's not very much because we usually end up with a car in our ditch every winter. And so they'll soften that out and then have a guardrail and and then on the other side, there'll be about eighty feet, sixty to eighty feet of guardrail and it'll all be put in per ODOT specifications, compacted, tested, and then we'll be softening that turn just slightly, which will help the situation a little bit. And then the road won't be closed, which that is the challenging part. And so while we're doing construction, there'll be a little shoe fly road right on the side that people will go down and then the slope people down. We'll have temporary rumble strips, massive amounts of flagging, which you put the net on. It kind of shows a little bit in the permit. It shows, I don't know if you guys have a copy of it. And then if we need to pile of cars to get people through there safely and then slow the log trucks down and all that. So everybody will be hopefully safe. There is a sense of urgency. We want to get it done and paved before the winter comes. So Corey's been working to get that permit through and approved and working with East Fork to get that done. So we can get it paved and done before the winter. Whether it hits, we don't want to have cold patch or gravel make that road even more dangerous. So that's our goal on that part. And then if you flip this one more time and then that's kind of just an overview of all the flagging that's going to go in. They're going to have several flagging stations, signage that goes way up the roads, trying to slow people down and let them know. And then there'll be rumble strips, which will slow people down. They're just temporary. So they'll be removed when we're done and Tappan is doing the work and but it's all been engineered. It's going to be safe. A bridge, a bridge needs to go anyway. So county got a good opportunity where East Fork, it's all paid for from us and getting done.
So it'll be a culvert rather than a bridge?
Yeah, it won't be a bridge anymore. There'll be a small culvert though to let drainage through there. So because you do have drainage coming from over here that will go on the other side of Ron's house, which is the house right directly from that and below Sanford's house. I'm sure you guys have already met Sanford. I think he's here. Yeah, yeah, bye bye. So anyways, there's a huge drainage, natural drainage that we need to, we need to, we need to keep it there for the watershed. So there'll be a small culvert that'll be taking some water down through that way.
And how far is it paved up? You said you were paving it.
Yeah, we're paving.
Just your corner?
No, they have to pave all the way out. I can't remember off the top of my head.
Okay.
And no, it won't be just where they cut. They have to pave out on both sides, shoulder and all that as they build that up. So and then
What's the estimated time for once we get started to finish?
It'll take about three or four days to cut the road, drop pipe in, and then they can bring the road back to a double lane, not using that shoe fly and then the guardrail probably take another week, week and a half. So so it's not going to be shut down that long. Once they go, they go. So.
And when is this going to start?
It started yesterday. Our plan is to start probably Monday. And then they may push it out just because we do have some weather coming in Friday. And so we're kind of watching the weather. And so if and if that doesn't time in right, because we don't really want to tear that thing open right away. And they want to get some signage up in enough time to warn residents, logging outfits and everything. Hey, this is about to happen. And so but at the latest, it would start would be in three weeks. So.
And how long do you have before the asphalt plans shut down?
If we use months in, they said they're probably going to run till the middle of November. And then they may run a little longer depending on weather and it's all about the temperature. And if not, then we have rain asphalt in for so but we're not going to let it go over winter and then pave it. We want, we're going to, if we have to, we'll pay the extra cost of the different holding. But the timeline's hitting where we should be able to get it paved and in the time.
Do you remind me what the speed limit is around that corner?
The speed limit? I think it's just an open county road. So there is signage now after the last sentence, I think it's fifteen miles.
Fifteen around the corner.
Yeah, but most people go about fifty. So.
I'm just wondering if it's straightened out, if it's going to increase the speed of vehicles or?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, it may, may not.
But you're not actually straightening it, right?
Yeah, we're not. Right now.
Guardrail reducing.
Right now that road is like a pretty good tilt. That bridge is saying quite a bit and cracked up a little bit. So it'll be a little more of a grade. It has to be a certain grade.
Okay.
Per ODOT. And it's not like they're going to straighten it out. It's going to be more gentle. Right now you hit that and just it's just like that. And if you don't make that turn, you're in up mountains orchard. So and that's where it'll be wider, softer. Right now, if you're coming up it, you know, log trucks coming down it, there's not room for both.
Right.
So and yeah, it's not, it's not a cure all. I mean, I want you guys thinking we're it's a miracle or something, but it's going to be much better than it was. So.
So I see there's a school bus turnaround there also. Have you?
School bus to the district? Yeah, school bus turnaround is actually down in a bin lot further down on Fur Mountain. And so
okay.
So it won't affect schools or anything like that. So.
Well, if you can leave the flaggers there for an extended period of time, I'm sure that the locals would be very happy.
We just dropped the rumble strip off.
Yeah, yeah, I did tell Tappan if he forgets, we take them on the scripts and flaggers, but and they're prepared if they have to have twenty four hour flagging and all that too. So the shoe fly road will only be when they're working and then when they're done working for the day, then they'll, it'll go back to a normal road. So but there'll be signage trying to slow people down. It's definitely a concern to Tappan. Why they have workers out there. We don't want to have log truck come or a person come flying through there to have a bunch of guys. So so safety is definitely a number one priority. So.
You talked about how much watershed was wasted with the open canal. Is that due excess evaporation or or just leakage into the?
On the.
A little while before you're talking about the the open canal resulting in wastage of sixteen CFS.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that goes back. So we do lose for seepage, but right now our system, a lot of East Fork system is a traveling water system, which is basically the easiest way to explain it is at your house, you would just turn your faucet on on your sink and leave it run twenty four seven just in case you might want to drink the water in the night. That water needs to be there. So in my case, I have to have enough water for all the water rights in that area at any given time for the orchards. So I have to, if it takes thirty one CFS to feed that bowl area, which is about what it takes, then I got to make sure I have thirty one CFS coming that way. And a CFS is a way to kind of see it in your head is one CFS is four hundred and eighty eight gallons, which would be four hundred and eighty eight milk jug gallons a second. And that's one CFS. So we're going to be saving a ton of water and it'll be much more reliable for our farmers. Cleaner water and don't risk the potential our ditch does blow out. Like we maintain that ditch twenty four seven from ground, you know, ground squirrels digging through it, blowing it out. So, you know, property damage loss, road damage. You name it. So there's a lot of benefits pump.
And the sixteen CFS is what percentage of the water used by your system?
Eighteen CFS. Yeah, so it's about this year we ran our whole district on sixty eight CFS.
So it's a pretty significant chunk.
Yeah, and we're allowed to run a hundred and four CFS, but we just, we managed the water a little different than it was managed before I can I've only been with the district for almost five years. So but we do things a lot different. Right? We're, our main goal is make sure our patrons have their water so they can grow the food and the fruit we all love. But also keep the river happy for the fish and the wildlife and all that. So it's a tough balance, but we've added Skaten telemetry over the last year and a half, which helps us automate it real time. And it's automated. Sometimes it works really good, but sometimes there's, you know, but I'm able to adjust water if I need to. If I see a mud flow that's coming down the river or something, because we have sensors through the river letting us know all kinds of different stuff. And I can be sitting at home if I need to and shut my diversion or lower my diversion if the river levels get too low. And I see they're not using as much water over here or here. And I can adjust throughout the district if I need to using my laptop or phone. So it's helped us be a lot more efficient.
How many miles have you put in pipe so far?
Since I've been here? It's just figuring this out. I lost count. I think we're at thirty seven miles, maybe thirty eight in the last four years. So quite quite a bit. And then in the next, next year, we'll be piping the Chipping Line, which is a really bad line. So I don't think I'll be sitting here because we're not doing any Fur Mountain crossings or anything. But there will be some road crossings and that is going to be almost six miles of pipe that we're placing. Right now it's not open canal. It's old wood pipe that's we're hoping it makes it one more year for construction. Hopefully constructions fall. And then there's also two smaller lines we'll be doing with it, which is about two miles. And then the year after, if everything goes right, we'll be piping Duke's Valley Canal, which is similar to the east side, and that's about six and a half. And so we have funding that pays for all of that. So and that grant funding also has windows of when I have to spend that money and they kind of upped it. Because if I don't use it, then they can allocate that money to something else. And that's our money. We, I worked hard to get all those grants. We have twenty seven grants that I try to manage to pay for all this. So we're going to just keep piping hard. We get it done and then the lower base will be hopefully piped in three years.
It's an amazing project. I was doing a good job.
Yeah. I should probably be in somewhere.
We appreciate you taking a bridge off of Corey's list.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate that she signed the permit. So I can keep piping through there. So I, yeah, I mean, we worked. It's been nice working with Corey. I've worked with the county for last four years and it went pretty good. Once Corey and Allison stepped in. So because it is a complex, that whole little crossings, not just cut the rope, there's a lot involved in that. So it went well. So.
Well, thank you very much. Are there any more questions? You good? All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, guys.
And the next thing on our agenda is the local public safety coordinating council interview. And we will be interviewing Timothy Ware to the Lipstick Council. Are you here, Timothy? All right. Thank you for applying and for coming down tonight.
Well, absolutely.
I'll let you introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested.
My name is Timothy Ware and I moved to Hood River about six years ago. I've lived in the gorge since I've had a house in the gorge since two thousand and seven, but I've been here full time since two thousand and nineteen. I live in the Heights. Did some farming over in Trout Lake and then I decided to come to a more populated area because the winters are a little rough up there. So I formally before coming here, I was with, I was in law enforcement for thirty one years. And I worked, I started with the Seattle Police Department, I worked patrol and then I was promoted, got my gold badge and moved up to investigations into narcotics. I worked in narcotics and I was transferred to Drug Enforcement Administration. I worked seven years there. I came back to the Seattle Police Department and worked the sexual assault unit. I left again and taught for the Washington State Training Commission. Then I ended my career. I did some other things in between and I I ended my career with Seattle in the Bionic Crimes Unit. And then I joined the Police Reformed Act under the under President Obama's administration. I was secondary committee on that. And I worked for the Department of Justice for a couple of years. I left the Seattle Police Department, came to Portland, worked out of the Portland Federal Building. And I I stayed a little bit longer to work on Senior Justice Initiative with in collaborations with AARP. I decided to get out of that and I came here and now I'm working as a farmhand for plastic fruits and Mosher and loving it, just writing a new chapter. Always wanted, I joined the Master Gardener Program here in Hood River. And I've, I'm enjoying being a farmhand and I'm working in viticulture and I get to work in the orchards and just kind of redefining myself a little bit. So and that's basically, I have two, two daughters and three wonderful grandchildren and so.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
We, we saw from your application that you had done a great many different things in your career.
Basically, everything.
Everything that one came.
Yeah.
Well, very good. And why are you interested? Why did you decide to apply for the Public Safety Coordinating Council?
I, I think that we, we had something similar to it in Seattle. Our city council actually I ran it, but just being able to coordinate local policy and planning for criminal justice purposes has always, I've always enjoyed that kind of work. It kind of similar work that I did with the Department of Justice. I've never really had a chance, but I have coordinated with other folks throughout the United States and best practices and supervising local offenders. So I thought that really spoke to me. And in two thousand and fourteen, I know they came out with a reinvestment grant for counties here in Oregon. And actually, we have them in Washington State too as well, but I never had a chance to work on that. I was working in the Obama administration during that timeframe, but we, there were lots of conversations and I always thought that I'd like to get involved in that. And so when this volunteer opportunity came up, I thought it would be a a great opportunity for me to explore other things as well. So.
Great. Great. Do we have some questions?
I just follow up on what you just asked. So in terms of policy, do you have any ideas in mind about things that you think we need to be looking at from a policy point of view, or you just plan to come in and see what's, see what's going on and?
I thought that would be best. I did, I think I do have some. I don't know what the resources are.
Right.
So I think I do have some recommendations, but they would have to match the resources.
Right.
So I, I think when I have an opportunity to figure that out, I I would like to speak up and, and, and talk a little about some of the things that we did with the Department of Justice. And some of the things that seemingly have worked in other states as far as supervising local offenders that have been creative and innovative. And but again, they're, they're kind of resource driven. So.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just, it sounds like you have a flexible schedule. So the time commitment, has that been explained to you? How, how the meetings were?
Yes.
That works for you?
Yeah, it works fine. Yeah. Yeah, I think that I'm excited about being in viticulture, but it's we go through a period that it's really busy and then right now not so much. So I, I think it was fit.
Will your boss give you some time off?
I hope so.
We'll count on it. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you for offering to share your wealth of experience with our community.
Oh, thank you very much.
And now we have the Columbia River Gorge Commission update from Michael Mills and Christina. I was, I was going to try and pronounce your last name and then I lost my courage.
It's taken me five years.
Every time you're here, I think it's times I'm going to say, I'm going to say it right.
Well, thanks for having us here for an update. The update today is going to look different than what it would have been six years ago, given, I mean, six months ago, given the disastrous fires we've had this, this year. And today's presentation that Christina is going to go through is just showing what the Gorge Commission is trying to do to change our regulations to expedite the process to get approvals for rebuilding structures and accessory structures and in the areas that were hardest hit, the ones where residential properties were, were lost. And it's after touring the site twice now, it's, there's some really difficult areas because a lot of these smaller subdivisions were built when standards were different, when there were no standards, separation between septic systems and property lines. So it's, it's really a challenge and we're trying to do our part to make it as easy as possible. And then particularly want to thank the Gorge Commission staff and the staff of Wasco County and to some degree Clickback County, but really Wasco County has, has really stepped up and worked with our staff to try to figure out what are the, the things that we can, we can do to expedite the process and and then even Skamania County and particularly Hood River County, we just got, you've probably seen it. There's a just a couple of days ago, Eric Walkerson and recommendation. So that was really helpful as well. And it speaks well for the collaboration that all the the county planners have with the Gorge Commission staff. And that's, that's really appreciated by the Gorge Commission. With that, I'll
Okay. Thank you, Michael, and chair your members of the commission. It's very nice to be here and my name is Christina Volnyakovsky.
Uh, it's very nice to be here and my name is Christina Volniakovsky. And so I, uh, Christina is fine.
Christina W.
Christina W or, or K Dub is fine too. That's what my staff calls me. Uh, anyway, I really a pleasure to, to have a chance to talk with you today and share with you some of the stuff that we've been working on. And as Michael said, uh, we've been really busy and pedal to the metal, working on, uh. Fire response. What can we do to help with Rowena and then the Berdoin fire? And so, uh, as, as Michael said, uh. You know, we were pretty shocked and, and very, uh, heartbroken about all the, the destruction from the Rowena fire and we. We went to see that and trying to figure out in, in cooperation with Wasco County, how can we work together to. Figure out how to rebuild in the, in the national scenic area. Because as you've seen from, uh, a lot of the. Articles that were written in the gorge news, that people were very worried about, uh, rebuilding in the national scenic area because of our standards. And so, uh, then when the Berdoin fire happened as well. Uh, we knew that we really needed to figure out how we're going to, uh, look at. The barriers to rebuilding. What are the standards that still need to be met in the national scenic area, but where? Where can we provide some flexibility for such an emergency as rebuilding after a catastrophic fire? Uh, so next. We've got, okay, um, so when. Our staff and Wasco County staff were thinking about. Uh, our current regulations that really were not suited for trying to respond quickly to a disaster, whether it's a flood or a fire. Or landslides, uh, those standards were written essentially to, you know. Protect the national scenic area resources and, uh, and we hadn't really thought about what would be required. In an emergency response situation. So. What we learned when we were discussing this with the planners. Uh, in both Wasco County and on our staff is that the two-year timeline in the management plan for applying and building is just much too short. And, uh, you know, in this particular case, uh, people are, some had insurance, some people didn't have insurance. Uh, the length of time it actually takes to get insurance settlements if they do have it, or to save enough money for some kind of a. Rebuilding is going to take some time. We also, uh, looked at our in-kind replacement standards because in our management plan, if you want to just replace. Uh, uh, dwelling that, uh, has a certain footprint and you want to just rebuild on that same footprint. The standards are pretty, uh, pretty flexible, um. So we decided that we really need some more clarity because it says, uh, you know, uh, like for like. And what does that actually mean? And especially if the place where that's structure, that dwelling. Was located earlier was not actually the best place for that structure, or maybe the foundation is destroyed and it can't be built back on. So there were other things that we needed to start thinking about, uh, in the like-for-like standard. And then. A third thing that we realized was that right now our standard for RVs on properties is just literally sixty days. You can stay in an RV for sixty days and that's it. Well, if it's going to take you several years to rebuild. Uh, sixty days on your property is not gonna. Work for you. And so we thought, well, you know, people would want to live on their property or at least stay there, have a place to stay overnight if nothing else while they're. Uh, supervising rebuilding. And so we thought, well, let's figure out how can we let them stay in those properties a little bit longer, as long as it's associated with. The rebuilding process. So, uh, in all these different discussions, uh, we also did some research and discussed all this with. Uh, other state agencies like DLCD, Department of Land Conservation and Development. And then we looked at examples of where people have. Had these catastrophic fires and how long has it taken them, uh, to actually go through the rebuilding process? And so we looked at Oregon, we looked at California, and then we also looked at Alahina. And there, uh, that's the scale here is of course, you know, a thousand times more, but. Uh, but it was really interesting because they have a pretty sophisticated permitting. Uh, department, you know, land use planning department there. And what we found in our research, because they had a very, very good dashboard where we could, uh, do this research. And so out of the twenty-two hundred structures that were destroyed, it was, it was very massive. There are three hundred and thirty-nine are right now in the process of being reviewed. Um, hundred eighty-seven residential, hundred fifty-two non-residential, meaning other types of structures like garages, et cetera. But there have been, uh, four hundred and seventy-six building permits actually issued to date, and so this is in two years. And then finally, there's only been fifty-one though where buildings have actually been completed. So, you know, the hopeful thing is that, uh, that the permits are moving forward and people are able, you know. Uh, fifty-one of them have been completed already and four hundred and seventy-six are in process, but still, you know, that's a, a. Long ways away from replacing twenty-two hundred structures. So, uh, we thought based on that and plus the data that we also looked at. Um, from California, we really felt like we needed to modify our. Our. Standards and the way that we have to do that is through, uh, Management Plan Amendment. And, uh, we all went through the gorge twenty-twenty process years ago and, you know, it's a pretty. Arduous process to go through a whole management plan review. But we do have the opportunity to do a very specific plan amendment. If the, uh, circumstances in the national scenic area have changed. And what that means is if there's something that is different now than it was, you know, five years ago when we went through the plan. Process, we can actually initiate a plan amendment and certainly with this disaster of these fires. Uh, it definitely showed that there was something that changed in the gorge that needed to have, uh, a plan amendment. So our goals were to try to remove the barriers to recovery and rebuilding, streamline and clarify the permitting process. And then make replacement provisions a little bit more usable. So the, uh, we quickly got to work as soon as the gorge commission in September gave us the green light to move forwards. With developing some policy language, uh, that we could take to the public and then take to the commission for review. Uh, it took us about ten days or so and, uh, it was very focused. And so. Uh, out for, for public comment now are the, uh, the. Draft policies that show that we can extend RV use from sixty days till. Home is rebuilt, uh, and then we can allow instead of two years, we can allow up to ten years to apply and rebuild. Uh, we'll allow some temporary structures of storage, so if somebody needs a garage to store equipment or. Uh, or other, uh, tools that, uh, they can have a structure for that as, as a temporary, um. Structure. And then we would allow expedited review for the replacement home of the same sense. And what that means is, and we have a, uh, kind of a, a sliding scale on this, so if you have a thousand. Uh, square foot home, you'd have up to like two hundred square feet that you could modify it and it can still go through an expedited review process. Which is much more streamlined and faster, uh, than the normal, because the normal. Review process, as you know, to go through all the different standards, uh, requires sometimes three to four months, especially if. Cultural surveys are required, but, uh, in this case, if literally it's on the same footprint, on the same foundation and. About the same size, then we can go through an expedited process, so they don't have to wait so long for a permit. Um, if the house is three thousand square feet, then at that point, you know, it can. It probably is maxed out at three thousand square feet, because that's already pretty large for the national scenic area. Um, and so we're trying to look at, uh, the policy language that would. Really make it much more clear as to what you can and can't do with the rebuilding process. So the next thing I wanted to show you is the timeline, like how long this actually will take. So, uh, as I mentioned, the draft policy language that Eric has already commented on and we've gotten some other counties. That have provided their input, uh, the deadline is the twenty-second for, um, for the public comment period. Uh, and then at that point, when the public comment period ends, uh, the staff will have about. Ten days to two weeks to gather up all that information and make any, uh. Revisions that we think are necessary to the draft policies that we've written. And then we have a hearing at the gorge commission meeting already in November and because of the, uh. Veterans Day holiday on Tuesday, we've moved it to a Wednesday on the twelfth. So then we'll hear more public comment there, the commissioners will deliberate and then they'll make a decision whether it's. Uh, complete enough to make a decision on the policy, uh, depend again on the comments that we get. Um, and if everything goes well and, uh, and the commission does approve it. At the November twelfth meeting, then it. Will have a, a few weeks to just finalize everything, clean up everything, and then we send it to the US Secretary of Agriculture. For review in concurrence and the Secretary of Agriculture has ninety days. To get back to us whether they confer with the changes that you proposed. The caveat here is, of course, we're in a federal shutdown. So we're hoping that the federal government will be back to work by the twelfth of. Uh, November, but there's no guarantees on that. So I'm gonna stay hopeful with that as well. And so let's just say we go to the ninety days, so that would be December, January, February. And, uh, once we get that letter, then we can send it to the counties. The counties will. Uh, bring it to the commission or, uh, a decision whether to move forward with that ordinance or not. And then, uh, you all will hold your hearings on it. And then whenever the language of the ordinance is final, it comes back to the gorge commission. Uh, for final approval and then back to the Secretary of Agriculture for final concurrence. And so usually with the. Plan, uh, like when we have the gorge twenty-twenty management plan review. The counties had two hundred and seventy days to be able to make the necessary changes to propose back to. The county commissions, but that was a very, very extensive amount of changes. This is so narrow and so focused, we hope that the counties will not need two hundred and seventy days to do that. Uh, because as soon as the county can get that done and we can send it into, uh, the commission and then the secretary. Then it can be in, um. Uh. It can be implemented. And so we're trying to make this on as fast of a timeline as possible, so that the people that are trying to rebuild. If they are still waiting to see how the language will be adopted, uh, then they'll, um. The sooner that this can be adopted, the sooner they can then apply under the rules, which gives them one of the ten years in which to rebuild. And then, um, being able to live in an RV, because if they apply right now, uh, they'll still be under the existing rules and not under the new rules. So that's why we're really trying to push this forward as quickly as we can.
And Christina might add too, I think we're really hopeful that. While the US Secretary of Agriculture has not up to ninety days, it'd be really nice if it was. Thirty days or less, uh, given the urgency of the situation, so.
Yeah, that's exactly right. So they, the Forest Service is very well aware of how we're trying to. Um, work on this as quickly as possible. They also have provided input. And so it's been Wasco County and the Forest Service and us who have created that policy language. And they brought up some really good points about temporary structures and, you know, how temporary is temporary and. Um, and also about the cultural resources. So hopefully, you know, if we can get the people. To rebuild on their existing footprint, there won't need to be any additional cultural resource. Uh. Reviews and that will certainly help because if there isn't a cultural review required, then as you know, that can. Uh, that takes some time and it takes Forest Service archaeologists to be able to, uh, review. And so, uh, on this last slide, um, I just have, uh. Some information that people can check. There's, uh, on our website, right on the landing page. Are, is, uh, the management plan amendment and the policies, uh, that we're proposing. Um, our comments are due on the twenty-second, you know, one minute to midnight. And, uh, and then the hearing is on the, it's twelve. And then finally, I just wanted to bring your attention, now leave this with, uh, Sophia. That we have prepared a defensible space for your home handout and this has been in consultation. With the different fire departments, different, uh, fire adapted communities. We've had a lot of. Partners, uh, weigh in on exactly how to help landowners create defensible space around their homes. And, uh, with really nice schematics and all that, so I'll make sure that we have copy screens with it. You can see that. And then finally, um, our climate change manager. Uh, Lisa Nascook, who is from Hood River here, um, she wanted me to. Uh, let you know that we've been working with partners in Hood River County. On the All Lands Partnership Program, which helps implement the Hood River County Community Wildflower. Flowers and have a wildfire protection plan. And the Mount Hood Area All Land Strategic Action Plan to reduce fire risk, which includes the Oregon portion of the national scenic area. And their next partnership meeting is November fifth. So, any questions?
In, in regards to the stated goals we had, one was. Um, and I understand there'll be language to define all that, but, um. Uh, as to ten years to apply and build a new structure, those two. Can't necessarily work at the same time, so does that mean that? You have ten years to apply and then a certain amount of time passed that, or is it ten years the final threshold, meaning the application would have to be? Much earlier?
No, the application, you'll have ten years to apply and then you have some time to rebuild that. And usually from the time that we accept an application as full, then you have ten years, uh, I'm sorry, two years. To actually build the structure. So that won't change, but, uh, um, the ten years is.
Just for the application process.
Yeah, thank you. Well, then we talked about five years and then they're going ten because, you know, just looking at some other. Fire is like California, it's not uncommon for people to have to spend three years fighting with their, uh, insurance companies and litigation and. Sure that gave enough time.
The experience from Wahana really. Shows how long it's gonna take.
Only a third of them are in process.
And I think the same thing's true around Detroit Lake and in Paradise. I mean, everywhere that you read about, so. You guys have done a lot of work. Pretty quickly. I mean, I know it seems ponderous and it sounds like it will take a long time, but the fact that we thought. All these ideas on paper and that people know where you're headed, I'm sure will be helpful and comforting.
Yeah. Worked really hard with.
Yeah.
Wasco County planning folks and.
Yeah.
That really was, uh. Very helpful.
Well, we, it hasn't happened here yet, but the experiences in our neighboring. Communities will mean that this is in place. And so we have another question?
Yeah, and so I'm trying to, um, understand the process a little bit, so, uh, the gorge commission will hopefully sometime. Expeditiously, uh, set some policies and then those policies need to get. Uh, translated into the code which we as supportive commissioners will be adopting and each of the other counties will also be adopting. Uh, and I'm, uh, I'm just trying to understand how crisply, how, how many different. Hooks are there, are there where things will be changing? Like, you, you just mentioned the number two years, you said, well, it's ten years to. Get a permission to, uh, to build, so I assume that someplace. It's, uh, it currently says two years in our code and you're gonna just change that number from two to ten, but then there's all the concepts of. You receive an entitlement and, and, and you have a certain number of years before you exercise it and then after you start to exercise it, there's vesting. And then you have, you know, assuming you're making progress towards it, you have, and I assume that's all built into our code. And I saw that, as you said, two years, I saw, um, Eric sort of thinking, it looked like your, your. Gears were turning, so I'm just wondering, how hard is it going to be to go from? The policy that you set to having our code ready to go? Is it just a handful of places?
Yes, it's not, it's not extensive. No, that's why we were able to do it in ten days.
Okay.
Because we already knew how we wanted to change it, we just needed to make sure that the language that we're proposing is clear. And it really gets to what we're trying to, uh, expedite essentially to streamline. And, uh, so it's not, you know, twenty-five pages of new policy. Language, it's much, much shorter than that and much more to.
So basically changing parameters.
Yeah. Yes.
And I think well, the, the county planners, uh. I think we'll have a, well, they'll know exactly what's going on after we vote on, uh, yeah, sure, we're gonna take on November twelfth. And Eric in China, if you want, but I, I think it'll be really clear. And we'll have any questions like the ones, a couple of ones that Eric raised, you know, hashed out and decided on as well, so.
So related to that, when this first happened, there were some steps and some missteps by certain advocacy groups concerning issues of of permission to rebuild. And I'm wondering how much your staff has worked with those folks to be sure that they're not going to be sticking against the gears as we move forward.
We, it's public comment period. We expect them to, are you talking about the Friends of the Gorge?
One of them, yep.
Okay, well, the Friends of the Gorge will submit their comments to us at the same time as everybody else. We haven't received any comments that I know of yet. We've received probably ten letters from landowners so far. Not a lot of of public comment yet, but I think probably the deadline is Wednesday, so I'm sure we'll, we'll get a lot more at the last minute. But we haven't really done much other outreach. We've done two workshops, so in Wasco County, the Dells. I attended along with Kelly Halsley Wilber, who ran the meeting. And then we had one for Clip Tech County in Lyle. And so we had probably twelve landowners come in and talk to us there. And we did a much more extensive PowerPoint than, you know, we gave you today. That went through a lot more detail, but I figured you didn't need that today. So we've been doing that kind of outreach. We certainly have, you know, lots of fact sheets and the whole website is tailored now towards making sure people have the information that they need. I've already approved two rebuildings in from Liverdale Fire in Live Tech County. And I think Kelly said they've done it up over the Moscow homes.
So would it be fair to say that you're cautiously optimistic about this moving forward?
Yeah, I think so. It, there's always changes in language that are needed because you know, we thought we had it, you know, pretty, pretty well written. And then the Forest Service said, well, but what about this and what about that? It's like, oh, man, I don't know about that. So that's why this period of time of public comment and getting the county planners to weigh in on this, because they're the ones that have to do the day to day permitting is really, you know, that's really going to be key for us. And the commission is going to take that very seriously, you know, what, what are the things that maybe we haven't quite thought of that, that we need to consider in the circumstances? But we just want to get people back into homes and back into their community and kind of you know, reconstitute those communities again. Some people may not come back, but those that really want to come back, we want to, we can't forget.
And I, and I, I wrote to the Friends of the Gorge and really asked them to do everything they can, you know, to work in harmony to to address this problem. So I'm one notch above the optimistic.
Also, I discussed with them, and I, I, I think that they understand and are going to be cooperative. I just wanted to know kind of how, how, how you're feeling. And I think that's helpful, yeah.
Well, thank you. Do we have any more questions? Nope. Great work.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We look forward to the next stage, yeah. And I do want to say one last thing to thank you all for appointing Michael as our on our Gorge Commission, because he's really made a huge difference in the last five years. And we really appreciated his input, intellect and passion, and he's very accessible.
We want to second that. Yes, thank you very much.
Thanks for your trust of me to work on this.
And we can't wait to see who, who the next Michael is.
I think there's gonna be some good out.
Excellent.
And we will now move on to our county quarterly reports and start with the community development. Thank you, Eric. And thank you for those wonderful comments on the book commissions.
Oh.
That was a great letter.
Yeah, no, happy to do so. And obviously, it's something that's going to impact our staff, and so we want to make sure that, that we were involved in the process.
Did I read it right? I didn't see any big issues in your letter, right? It sounded like you were saying, yeah, this makes sense.
Yeah, the only thing, no, you're absolutely correct. The only thing that would be nice, I'm not optimistic about it, but you know, in state law, a lot of times when there are mandatory changes that come through the legislature, counties have to apply them whether they have adopted those into their zoning ordinance or not. And it would be nice if we had a similar process so that we didn't have to go through this, you know, the extensive timeframes and bring it back and adopt it, you know, go through our planning commission and the board and get it adopted. It's just, it's mandatory and it will be applied until such time as we adopted it. The dummy code, which may take us a little bit of time, or maybe we can group it with some other code work that we're doing, make it a little bit more convenient. See what that goes.
Thanks.
All right, well, thank you. Without too near present some highlights from the community development department on the last quarter. From a staffing perspective, with the recent hire, Steve Miller, our new planning manager, the planning department is now fully staffed for the first time since March of twenty twenty-four. So that's, that's a really good feeling. And as a result, the planning department recently expanded our front counter hours by having a planner available each, each day between eight and one and then by appointment. So that's and the word must have gotten out because the week after we did that, we were extensively busy, so it was great. I'm also pleased to report that the planning department recently received word from the Department of Land Conservation and Development that we were awarded a housing planning assistance grant for phase two of the Old Elton Corporate Community project. So that's great news. The final details of the award are being worked out, such as, you know, final scope of work, budget and who we ultimately, which consultant we ultimately get paired up with. But we are hopeful, we've already asked to be paired up with Echo Northwest to assist us with phase one. So we're, they're a great staff. They work really well together. And so hopefully, we can be paired up again. If all goes well, we expect to reconvene the project sometime after the first of the year. Planning staff and our consultant Alice Cannon continue to work on a draft accessory dwelling unit ordinance for our rural residential zones. We're scheduled to meet with our planning commission on Wednesday and to initiate the project and work through a few minor policy issues with them before we get too far along in developing the code, although we, we have a very solid draft developed so far. In our co-compliance department, one of the highlights that I wanted to share is that John Bamford, who's our co-compliance coordinator, recently started working on a co-compliance policy and procedural manual, which is intended to provide some guidelines on how the county community, the county co-compliance program operates. And so we have a formal document that we can point to when questions arise. We, we have a pretty good document as it, as it relates to, you know, how we approach a hearings officer and the, and the guidelines that we use in that matter, but not too much in regards to the rest of our department. And so it'll help answer those questions so that when they do come up, we're all on the same page. You know how we, how we operate and and the public will know as well. So John is working on this document as time allows. Although we hope to have at least a draft completed by the first part of the year and with the goal of, of presenting it to you for review and adoption sometime this fiscal year. The, the building department continues to do great work in keeping construction projects moving along. Besides completing all permit reviews and inspections within the county and the city of Cascade Locks, as well as the plumbing and electrical programs within the city of Hood River. We also have contracts for building services within the city of Hood River for their mechanical and their structural programs, as well as within the city of White Salmon for all their inspection work. We're also on contract with Wasco County for building official services. And we're very fortunate that we have such a great team of committed inspectors and staff, especially being in a rural area where it's hard to attract and retain inspectors. That's a problem that's occurring throughout the state. And so we are very fortunate of our three inspectors. Two of them were born and raised here and all three of them worked in the industry before they became inspectors. And so they bring a lot of great value to that position. Finally, in our G S department, Jake Edwards, County G S coordinator, continues to do great work in assisting other departments throughout, throughout the county with various projects. Just one example is Jake spent a lot of time during this last quarter helping nine-one-one and the Sheriff's Department with their projects in developing a new CAD system for public safety and emergency services. I'm sure you're aware of that project. Definitely important work that has a G I S component to it. And that will hopefully make emergency responses more efficient and effective ultimately once it gets in place. The work that is definitely gotten out, the, the level of work that Jake provides as far as service that he can provide for other departments. He's definitely being utilized. And it's great to see. In fact, Jake regularly gets asked to not only serve other county departments, but he's regularly being asked by outside agencies if he could assist them as well. And, and that has actually resulted in some additional funding for his department since he does charge for his time. So, so that's in a nutshell, that's what's going on in the community development department. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Well, that was very comprehensive. And it's, you are doing great work. Do we have questions from the commissioners? Do you have a question with Commissioner Abix?
One. So I see that the revenues are meaningfully, like more than ten percent from the five-year average, but the number permits is not. So is that, is that certainly a function of us increasing the, the costs? Or the, 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 you know, the line item costs, or is that because of the business coming in from those other places outside of?
Well, are you referring to planning department or the building department?
I'm sorry, building department. Could I say planning? I meant building.
Yeah, building department. Yes, that's exactly right. I think there's some of that in regards to the fees being increased. I think that's reflective of that. But I think more so in this case is we had two large projects that came in. We had the, the WAM new addition. And then we had the Mariposa Village Electrical Permit. And so those together really jumped up those fee levels. So a little bit of an anomaly, but that's reflective of that. But I think some of that, those fees increases certainly are working their way into the system.
Great, thanks. Now I just have my, my own Jake story. I asked him a, a question on his web map just as a user. And fifteen minutes later, I got an email reply with a link to a fix to the problem I had identified. It could have been the email slow that day.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next up, we have I don't have it in front. We have Good thing I memorized the name.
Yeah, good evening to you or commissioners. For the record, my name's Brian B V. I'm the assessment records and elections director. And that's pronounced B V, in case it's All stuff to me, yeah. Let's see, quarterly report. I encourage you to ask questions as I go along, so feel free to interrupt whenever you want.
So you can ask questions.
So we're gonna start, Sophie, with the quarterly report. So the first chart there on the quarterly report, maybe we can zoom in and then I'll tell you as we need to, we'll get down. That first chart is Records and Elections Division information. It's statistics on according marriage licenses and registered voter counts. And this quarter for us is always a busy quarter for recordings and marriage licenses. People like to buy houses and get married in between July and September. So the numbers for those two statistics are higher than other quarters. We're gonna scroll down, Sophie, to the voter registration breakdown there. Our percentages of voter registration counts haven't changed that much. The one I think major or not major, but some more significant change is just we continue to have more non-affiliated voters in, in our county and slightly less Democrat voters. And I think at some point that the non-affiliated may surpass the Democrat registered voters.
How, how, how does one come up with a with their own party? Like
This process.
Okay, so that there is a, there's a process. Obviously, I knew it, I knew Arthur were answering that.
Thanks, Arthur.
Have to have a certain number of votes in the
Yeah, I honestly, that is not a process that I have to deal with. The state reaches out and says, we happen to party, so our commissioner Baggis probably knows more about that than I do.
The Secretary of State's website, I think the O R Star manual summarizes how to do that.
Thank you. I'm sure there are plenty of other things you can spend your time doing that you're not doing.
I try to focus on the things I have to worry about.
You got a lot, you got a lot of that.
Your strategy.
I was just wondering if the non-affiliate, non-affiliates are have anything to do with once you turn eighteen and you're at the DMV, you're automatically registered as non-affiliated. And then you have to go in as a voter and change your status. And a lot of people don't know that.
Yeah, I mean, they, they get a postcard and a lot of people, you know, ignore that. We definitely saw a large spike in the non-affiliated voters when we went to automatic registration.
But that's now been quite a few years, right? Like eight years or so?
Yeah, that's about right.
And it just keeps going up, but yeah.
Well, I didn't know that.
Yeah, so then people don't actually get the two ballots, right? They just get the final ballot. You don't get the primary.
Very on that, yeah, on the primary ballot, there's three different ballots that go out. There's more than three. And what I mean by that is depending on where you live, depends on which contest. But there's three types of ballots for the different parties in a primary. But in all the other elections, you know, district election, there's no, there's not parties. And then in the general election, everybody gets the same ballot, so. I would just mention that a recent change that could affect you all is that there was a bill that passed, I believe in twenty twenty-four, but became effective that says that an incumbent seeking reelection to the same office must file their declaration of candidacy or nomination petition at least seven days before the applicable filing deadline for the non-incumbent. So just want you all to be aware of that, so. We began preparing for the May nineteen, twenty twenty-six primary election already. So our website's live and your filing period begins September eleventh. Scrolling down to the assessment division, Sophie's already there. That's great. So thank you. The appraisers finished completing the twelve hundred and five flags for permit activity for the twenty-five, twenty-six tax year this quarter.
So that means that they had a permit and so now you reassess, you reevaluate their values based on the completion of that work?
We've gone out and reviewed at least what's going on on the property and picked up any exception value that exists. And I would just highlight that that activity continues to take a predominant amount of our time, which really is limiting our ability to do anything else. I mean, that's a definite revenue generator, but there are other revenue generating activities that we could be doing that we're limited to do currently. I will scroll down to page two there, Sophie. I'm gonna stop at the personal property return section there under six eighty-three, you'll see. So personal property de-filing continues to increase in popularity and this process helps us process returns quicker. Which has been great. I'm also gonna highlight that we've currently scanned forty-six percent of our five thousand or, or five thousand five hundred and nine of our estimated twelve thousand tax lock cards. So we're making great progress on digitization of records, which will help efficiencies and access to our records. You know, we have several records that are currently still paper-based. And so by, you know, getting these digitized, it will allow us to share them with other departments, which several come to our department constantly to, you know, access those records as well as the public. So we're really excited about that. The segregations, we have twenty-three segregations worked this quarter. This is a new stat that we've begun tracking this quarter. And we've noticed, and just, we've, we've noticed a lot of boundaries. Um and we've noticed um and just we've we've noticed a lot of boundary change activity this year, which, you know, that all leads to. You know, new exception value, but that also leads to more accounts and uh more work for our department to, you know, continually uh track and maintain. So I'm gonna skip over uh the tax rule um information. I know you guys are probably interested in that. Um I'm gonna go into more detail. On that um after I finish uh the highlights of the quarterly reports and come back with a great detail on that. Uh tax appeals, page three, Sophie. Um not much has changed with our appeals, um other than we have another case in the tax court for a farm use disqualification. Um farm used of calls disqualifications is this, we see this as an area where we can uh affect the revenues that the districts receive. Um but unfortunately, sometimes that'll lead to uh appeals in the court. And uh so we have our first, um cause we uh we were able to get to a few of those this year and uh one of those has appealed.
Can you describe just really briefly what uh what one of those disqualifications would look like? What sort of characteristics do you have to prove?
Or it's characteristics we have to prove? I mean, in this case, it it boils down to whether they're farming or not farming. And so when we've determined that um someone is uh no longer farming their property, uh we we go after disqualifying them from. Uh receiving special assessment.
Who is involved in that determination? So what does this look like?
Yeah, I mean, my 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 appraisal staff, uh you know, when they're out on properties, they, that's one of the things that they go and inspect for. Um usually it's a multi-year process that we're, you know, we're looking at the property, um making sure that they're indeed not farming. And uh you know, send correspondence and ultimately disqualify.
The reason I ask is because the the amount of farming that's required is really pretty tiny and it seems like this sort of thing could happen without even being noticeable.
Yeah, um there's there's a lot of ambiguity with uh farming special assessment, but there's also a lot of statutes. And case law that supports uh the work that we end up doing on this. You know, there's an income requirement in the non-EFU zones, but then there's also a use requirement. Uh so you know, the farming needs to be conducted in a mode of operation that's similar to other farms. So uh you know, when you have underutilization of farming activity, that can be fairly obvious.
Okay.
So.
Thanks.
Uh revenues on page three, um our budgets, uh about where we'd expect it to be in all categories. So not much to report there. Um personal supervision, you know, staff are always busy um attending meetings, conferences and um trainings. And then participation in other important activities like uh hiring and those kinds of things, county safety committee. This kind of activities. And then um on page four, needs and issues. Um you know, I would just continue to highlight the biggest issue in um our department is that we have too many single points of failure. Um and general lack of bandwidth compositions, um. You know, lots of remaining key personnel at the wrong time, it really be detrimental to this organization. Um you know, we're continuing working on cross-training staff. Yeah, thank you, uh Commissioner Ray, knocking on wood. Um. You know, we're continuing cross-training staff and uh you know, working on creating procedures, uh but it takes years. The work we do is complex. And it takes years of going through the processes uh for staff to get up to speed, you know, in the last um. I don't know, eight or nine years, you know, we lost over a hundred years of experience in my department and uh so I have a really young team. But they're doing amazing work. They're really uh sharp and uh really dedicated, uh doing awesome work, so. I'm truly impressed with what they're able to accomplish, uh but they'll still have uh plenty of room for growth. And uh so I look forward to that. Um yeah, and then we're optimistic that when we can move forward with the addition of our appraisal position, the classification of some of the existing positions. Um we'll be able to start reappraisal and base production levels and begin um processing exemption and special assessment reviews. Uh which should assist us in revenue revenue generation for the county and the other taxing districts. All right, so if we could move on to the assessed value comparison.
On page two.
Um I don't know that that has been shared with you. Um I do intend to have uh to share all these documents with you. Then you can zoom in, try to make it um as big as possible. Full page with as we can. There we go. So uh this is an assessed value comparison by uh the different taxing districts and we'll just kind of start on. At the top, the county is up at the top. We got the twenty four, twenty five year on the left, twenty five, twenty six after that. And then the percent change and then the amount of assessed value change. Um this year was a uh good year. We had um some very uh some things that helped with our assessed value increase and so you'll see that. Instead of being um closer to three percent like it's been um in more recent years. Uh we had a for the county, we had a, you know, a five point three two percent uh increase in assessed value. A little higher than that in the local option, because the local option isn't affected by urban renewal, so.
And is urban, it it was the changes in urban renewal that resulted in the cities never being less than the counties? Usually the cities like almost the point.
Yeah, the city also uh didn't have uh the um impact from uh the one of the major disqualifications. That we had a whole exemption program.
Right.
Uh they're outside of that district and so.
That's probably a big chunk of this whole thing, right?
That that is a chunk of.
You you can say what it is, right?
Yeah, Cardinal Glass was disqualified from Immaculate Zone exemption and um for uh lack of having the required number of. Employees that they needed to maintain their um exemption, so. Um. Yeah, I'm assuming you guys can see those numbers okay? Can you see those? Okay, um. I'll just touch on maybe the the bigger, the bigger numbers, you know, Y East uh Rural Fire District. I mean, that's in Cardinals area. So that's one of the reasons their um assessed value is nine percent. Um you know, a predominant, you know, number of. Cardinal, it represents a bigger proportion of their assessed value than it does in other districts. Um the same with Odell Sanitary, uh plus we had a large um industrial property that we put on the wall this year. Um and so that's also affecting Odell Sanitary's assessed value there. Um the rest of them are closer to, you know, what we would expect to see and. Everybody that's uh overlapped that Cardinal District did benefit um this disqualification.
It's basically, there's a one-time step of about one, one and a half percent for all of those districts that were touched by that, but in following years. Um you know, you 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 can only be disqualified once, so in following years, they'll be back to the. The rate of growth that they saw, so they should consider this one-time money rather than a um sustainable annual increase.
That's correct. Uh let's go down to the bottom, Sophie, where it says urban renewal. Um so then, uh you know, the top is our uh taxing districts, uh the urban renewal areas. We have four in our county currently. Um and you can see, you know, our new West Side District uh did really well this year, uh with a thirty four percent uh. Growth, which, you know, that's where uh predominant amount of our um new properties are coming online, so.
So it's growth in what? Is that the TAV or is that?
Yeah, that's assessed value.
Okay.
So above frozen base.
Uh but that's a, that's above the base?
Well, it represents the the change above base, so.
Okay.
Yeah. And then overall, um you know, our AV total for, you know, overall went uh up five point three seven percent, so. Um was uh, like I said, pretty good year for there. Any questions about that before we move on?
Can you remind me the waterfront urban renewal, um is that, has that been terminated?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Yeah, the city did another uh project with the sewer or something like that. They were still wanting to pay off before they can close it down. My understanding is that's getting close, so maybe maybe next year or the year after or something. Okay, we're gonna move on to uh change property ratio comparison. Let Sophie zoom in before I get started. Okay, so this is the change property ratio and just as a reminder what the change property ratio is. Uh change property ratio is the um mechanism that we use to uh give new properties that are. Uh giving exception value the benefit of measure fifty. Um so if you recall, measure fifty was put in place back in nineteen ninety seven, took the ninety five, ninety six value and took on ten percent. And uh and then it's, you know, typically only been growing three percent per year for most properties. Well, when new properties uh come online. Um because real market values have grown much faster than that three percent increase. Uh there's a big gap between their maximum assessed value, which is usually their assessed value. And then their real market value, which is what we believe the property would actually sell for, right? Um especially in this county where uh we're loved to death, right? Um uh so the change property ratio um represents uh. That's our, it's our mechanism to like equalize. And what it is, is the ratio between the real market value and the maximum assessed value, the average by property class. For all unchanged property in the county. So you can see um. Like residential, for example, uh last year was actually lower at thirty six point four and higher this year at thirty eight twenty five. And that's because uh real market values um this year, uh based on the information that we had available to conduct our ratio study. Indicated a decrease in our property values. And uh so um when real market values don't climb as fast as the maximum assessed value, it starts to grow higher.
Is that what happened on the commercial side?
Uh yeah, as well, so. You know, that's we're limited by the data though that we have available to us. Um you know, we use sales from prior years.
Right.
Uh to evaluate that information and uh sometimes the sales information we have just makes it challenging for us to. Get um very good values and uh we're appraising on a bell curve. Um using the law of averages, so um. Uh sometimes we see changes in growth, but we also implemented a new cost factor book this year. Um the Department of Revenue um. Uh provides counties with a cost factor book, which is uh how we determine, you know, cost per square foot for building. Quality of construction of homes. Um the last time they updated their book, I wanna say was two thousand eight. Um and so we have chosen to be one of a few counties to uh leave. Using the Department of Revenue's Cost Factor Book and switch to the Marshall and Swift Cost Factor Book. Which is a publication that's updated quarterly, uh and so we're getting much more accurate cost factor information, so.
Do you know what, what's the highest the residential CPR has been in recent years? I seem to remember it's above fifty.
I I don't have that in front of me, Commissioner Babbins, I apologize. So I certainly could get you um a historical um a breakdown with the.
Yeah, um. And. Cause obviously I'm gonna be asking questions about compression, but um so yeah, maybe, maybe I'll just do that offline.
Sure, always happy to chat with you. Um let's see, you know, um if unless there's any other questions about the change property ratios, I'll just uh move on. Okay. Sophie, we're gonna move on to the tax rate comparison. Uh so this is a comparison of the twenty four, twenty five tax rates to twenty five, twenty six tax rates. Um. You know, a couple of notes, uh so my area description differences, that's that's my um. Kind of interpretation of the different tax code areas and kind of the difference between another tax code area. And to give you uh some sort of sense, so for example, you know, tax code area one is the City of Hood River, you know, makes up the. The, you know, non um inside the urban renewal or excuse me, the city boundary. And two is the Cascade Locks, you know, three is the Y East Rural Fire Protection District and maybe four and five. Um eight is an area that has no uh rural fire protection in it. Um there's also not a lot of homes in that area. Um and that one is specifically in the Columbia Gorge Community College. Uh nine is the same with no fire protection, but in the Mount Hood Community College. Um anyways, you have the descriptions there. Um. And then I would just, a couple of notes, you know, all the code areas include the county, nine one one, school, education services, transportation and library. Um so that's, that's given in all of those code areas. Those code areas overlap the entire county. And then the next note is that uh all all the code areas either include uh the Port of Hood River or the Port of Cascade Locks. You're either in one or the other. Um you know, if you live in Cascade Locks, you're in Port of Cascade Locks. If you live. Pretty much anywhere else, you're in the the Port of Hood River uh district. And then uh Columbia Gorge Community College and Mount Hood Community College um. Uh follow that same logic pretty much. Uh Columbia Gorge Community College represents a majority of our county. And the Mount Hood Community College is Cascade Locks and some areas up close to the mountain.
So I'm sorry, I'm a little confused. Is is these numbers, is this the mill rate that I would see on my tax bill or is this the effective rate? It's not the effective rate after urban renewal.
This is the effective rate after urban. Or excuse me, this would include urban or not.
Would include urban or not.
Yes.
Right, yes, thanks.
Yep. Uh and then the Park and Recreation District is located in all code areas except code two and twelve. So um I would highlight, uh you know, um. Most of the tax rates went down, uh the few that went up, uh West Side Rural Fire Protection District. Uh had a new, uh you know, the voters approved the levy from fifty cents to ninety seven cents. Uh last year and so, you know, they have a ninety four percent, um that's a ninety four percent increase or forty seven cents. Um and so you can see, you know, in code areas five and uh sixteen, uh the tax rate actually went up by forty two cents. Um as well as the West Side Urban or um outside of the city, which includes the way uh West Side Fire District. And then um you can see code areas two and uh twelve also went up. And that's because the voters in the Cascade Locks uh district, um. I'm not sure they actually approved, uh I can't recall whether they approved the increase, but the district as a whole improved uh a bond increase. For uh Mountain Community College, so or excuse me, a new bond. And so that's why and that to those tax rates are also up. Any questions on that? All right, so we're gonna move to the Dix District Taxes Comparison. So the commissioner is probably the most interested in. Um so those, that AV increase and the disqualification uh led to a uh. Seven percent increase in taxes uh for the county and a little more than that for the local option. Um and uh that means an extra, an additional um, you know, over half a million dollars. Um from last year, so uh increase. Um. You know, I would tie, I've already mentioned, you know, the Y East Fire District is in the the Cardinal area, so they had a twenty percent increase. In their tax base um from last year to this year. Uh the local option, uh I mentioned, I just mentioned the rate, uh so they had a hundred and two percent increase. Um over last year. Um Odell Sanitary, uh already mentioned, is in the Cardinal area. They had a fourteen percent increase. And then, of course, the Mount Hood uh Community College bond is new this year, um so that's a hundred percent increase from last year.
How much would it go up? I've gone up without that.
Without the.
Without the disqualification. Well, I mean, just overall, is that?
Forty thousand less.
It's four hundred.
The amount attributed for.
What is that percentage wise? Like normally, how much does this go up from year to year? What is that number? If minus a. An incident like that, how much has it been growing each? an incident like that, how much has it been growing each year?
I mean, all things being equal, we would we would see a pretty close to the AV change, you know, if, you know, tax rates don't change um, other than the urban renewal tends to steal just a little more each year. Um, so I use the term. I use the term steal, but tape, uh, this reallocate, how about that?
It's a.
So it would be around three normally?
It it's usually a little more than three. I mean, in a year where things are going up normally, um, it would be a little more than three because of new construction activity, you know, three and a half sometimes, I mean. It it ranges, so it ranges.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It would be helpful, I I I fifteen years ago, I went through like ten years worth of history and looked at at what the changes have been over a period of time. Uh, it would be helpful to kind of just keep updating, uh, something like that, so we can get a better understanding of how much construction activity contributes to growth of the AV and then how much you know, o- other factors are involved.
Yeah, we track exceptions, we have exception numbers, but identifying what portions of that are attributable to you know, new construction versus other activities is.
Was it gonna be, you know, ninety five percent was gonna be three percent and then isn't pretty much.
Well, that's not exception value, that's not the exception value. So exception values, anything that's based um, outside of the three percent increase, though.
Right, that's what I'm saying, anything else is going to be that.
And not necessarily, because if you have some properties where they're paying on real market value, if real market values go up, then their AV is gonna go up more than three percent.
That's gonna be exceedingly small, it's a percentage of the overall thing.
Generally. Yeah.
It would just be helpful to I guess I just like the numbers.
Yeah, certainly. Uh, let's see, where was I at?
Well, you're looking at that, just, Elsie, you you mentioned to me, and I just want to make sure I got this right, that you're viewing this, you have three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars in bump as you start to work on next year's um, budget, you're viewing, you're you're invest, you're considering this as a one time thing and you're looking at spending it as such, right?
Thanks, go ahead.
Yeah, um, so just overall, you know, the work that my department does for all the taxing districts in the county, you know, last year uh, the tax is raised were forty eight million dollars approximately and this year fifty one million dollars. Um, so it's a big driver of a lot of what happens in this community. And so a lot of good work happens because of that, so. Uh, you know, seven point five eight percent increase, so an additional three million six hundred and forty nine thousand dollars over last year. Uh, Sophie, we'll move on to the distribution comparison. Uh, so this is just a distribution comparison, twenty four twenty five on the left, twenty five twenty six on the right. Uh, you know, you can see last year, the school was getting, school district and the SD was getting fifty four point one eight percent of the pie. Uh, this year, they're getting fifty three point six three percent of the pie. Um, last year, the county was getting now a little over ten point six percent. This year, uh, fifteen point five eight percent. You see that, you see all the different numbers. Uh, it's pretty, pretty consistent from year to year, not a whole lot of change there, so. You had anything that you wanted to add? And then our tax summary is now complete and is on our website. Um, has some of those more numbers that you, Commissioner Babbitts, might enjoy seeing a little more detail.
Believe in them.
Uh, you know, you know, highlight compression, you know, we had about nine hundred and um, almost a million dollars of compression in our county.
That's mostly on the education, their operating levy, right?
That, well, what happens is the operating levy is what gets compressed first under measure five. Uh, so yeah, majority of the compression, you can see seven hundred and thirty seven thousand of that, nine hundred and thirteen came uh, you know, was taken away from the operating levy due to measure five compression.
So so what my point is that today, that's where if you if you if you worried about compression, that's where you look today. And we're not in a situation where we're going to be seeing compression broadly elsewhere.
Yeah, Sophie, can we flip the page to there?
How much is the total levy that we're compressing? Before the compression?
It's a, it's tens of percent.
Well, compression happens on a property per property basis because it deals with real market value. Um, so we have to do that calculation on every single property.
What effect does it have on the operating money?
On ours?
No, the school, the school district operating level.
Rating levy, are you saying that it?
Overall, it removed seven hundred and thirteen thousand.
So what is the total in the operating levy? Without.
It's like thirty percent.
I can't see those numbers.
Yeah, no problem. I got it right here.
Last time I thought it was like thirty thirty five percent. Is that way off?
So their total operating levy that they got was three point eight million.
Okay.
So they lost, you know, not quite a million of that. They would had. Yeah, they would had. I can't do math now. Um, let's go, yeah, we're on page two, so this this Commissioner Babbitts may highlight your question a little more. Um, you know, I I have this, the billing rates for each code area, so you can see each district. And it's broken out by the three categories, right? Government, education and bond. And I believe the highest government rate is currently seven dollars. So, you know, there's still another two dollars and ninety nine cents worth of growth that can happen before we'll see any compression in our local option.
We just, I was on the same page, measure five limits that number to ten dollars.
That's correct. And I think I've took more than my twenty minutes, so, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Hello? No more, we had some questions.
Sophie, can we get those additional slides that were in the? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to come and share the work that we do in the Assessment Records and Elections Department, we appreciate it.
And I appreciate the change to putting, having a couple of departments present to us rather than just the written quarterlies. Yeah, this is, this is really educational and we did go way over, so maybe we'll have, we'll we'll adjust it next time.
Sorry to our idiot that's coming behind.
Just because you're the last person.
Eric went short, so I thought I'd make up some of his.
But just because you're the last person doesn't mean it's all on you because it was all the other things.
I mean, just given that we haven't done this before, we're just learning that we need to have more time for it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so that is the end of our work session and we'll take a five minute break and at six thirty we will start up. And at this time, I will call our business meeting to order on Monday, October twentieth, twenty twenty five at six thirty, we're a little late today. Um, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? I believe we have one.
Yes, we have a supplemental agenda item that uh, we would add, I believe, to a new business item B.
Okay. And it is for the discussion of the session this Thursday in regard to the appointment of a new senator for our region. Okay, I should have written that in before, sorry. Uh, are there any conflicts or potential conflicts of interest? We will start with a public hearing. And this is the
Chair, you were.
Yes.
Uh, with the addition of the supplemental agenda, we should have our vote to approve to amend.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
That we approve the amendment to the agenda as proposed, sir.
Any discussion? Commissioner Munzer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Babbitts?
Yes.
Commissioner ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Weathers?
Yes.
Sure, yes, all right. All right, we will move on to our public hearing. Recommendation is approval of the second reading of the ordinance amending Article forty fourth floodplain zone of the Hood River County zoning ordinance and goal seven areas of subject to natural disasters and hazards of the county's comprehensive plan to comply with Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA's twenty twenty flood hazard model ordinance for Oregon and FEMA's twenty twenty four pre-implementation compliance measures, HICMS. So we will open the public hearing and have a staff report. Welcome back. Thank you, Eric.
Uh, once again, Chair, you're Commissioners, I'd like to introduce Alice Cannon with Cannon Planning Services. Uh, she's been our consultant working on this project. You're doing a great job. And she will give you a presentation. And then we also have online Chris Crane, County Land Use Council, uh, who's also available if you have some legal questions.
I have a short, good evening, Chair and members of the Commission, I have a short PowerPoint presentation that I will share now. Okay. You have seen this presentation now. This might be the third time, but I'm gonna focus on just a few different slides.
It looks reassuringly familiar.
Yeah.
It gets better every time.
I don't intend to repeat, though I can always go back to any slides that I didn't cover tonight if there are any questions from you or from the public about any of those previous slides. Um, the intention this evening is to go through some of the key points that maybe we didn't cover as thoroughly last time. And as you know, the, just by way of introduction, the Federal Emergency Management Administration in summer of twenty twenty four imposed some new rules upon local governments in partnership with the state of Oregon, so there's a new model code that we must comply with in order to it's in response to a lawsuit that was brought against FEMA, claiming that the uh, FEMA rules that relate to floodplain protection do adequately protect certain uh, species of fish and marine mammals. And those apply to most of the state of Oregon and um, and also all streams that flow into the Columbia, so it affects all the Hood River County and most of the state of Oregon. So with that in mind, I'm gonna cover some of the key points. Um, we talked last time about what the intention is to protect riparian vegetation, the floodwater storage and also water quality that through these regulations. Um, I wanted to cover this slide again, just to give you an aerial view of of what is, what areas are being protected. So you see a floodplain boundary, today there is a floodplain boundary on on some FEMA maps, those maps will change, proposed to be changed in the coming months or next year or so. Um, but they remain the same as they've been, I think, since the nineties or eighties. And the intention here, and I'll put my cursor on here, so maybe you can see that, is that the area of regulation that that these new changes is the floodplain boundary marked in blue and the area that so everything else is undeveloped space, but the area in red is developed space being a building or an impervious surface. So anything new that's a new building, new impervious surface would be a regulated or removal of some trees and and other things like that, with regulated activities. So you get some picture examples that you've seen before. I wanna move ahead to some of the exemptions. Um, and really the issue is that Eric and I wanted to cover this evening is around how was, might this impact the county as an applicant? Um, a number of activities are exempt from the rules and those include routine maintenance of streets, sidewalks, road maintenance, landscaping that doesn't involve grading, excavation or fill, flood control facility maintenance, above and below ground utility facilities and routine maintenance of structures, if you need a new roof or new siding, something like that. And then there's a group, and I'm gonna get to this in another slide about really what, what does it mean to for the the routine agriculture and forestry practices? So I'll get into that. So this is a little bit more detail about what the street sidewalk road maintenance looks like, that if we were to um, expand the footprint of any of the, uh, our existing facilities here at the county, then those would be regulated activities, but if they're existing footprint, then those um, would be exempt if they are the maintenance activities. So let's talk about forestry a little bit here. Routine silk culture or forestry practices do that do not meet the definition of development, including harvesting of trees, as long as the root balls are left in place, enforced road construction or maintenance does not alter the contours used or alter culverts, I think that's pretty detailed. You might ask, what's the definition of development? That development definition is listed there on the slide. So you get an idea of what that is. But I wanted, because you have a forestry department here and and some land that might be impacted by this, we wanted to put some special emphasis on that, but a number of the activities would be, would be exempt. And then removal of not just weeds and hazard trees and replacement non-nated vegetation with native vegetation would also be an exempt activity and of course, there's a lot, puncture vine, as you see here is everywhere in the summer months especially. So that's something that a lot of folks like to move away from. Um, we covered all of this territory last time. Um, based on the findings of fact that are in in your packet as well as the planning commission recommendation on September thirteenth. The commission recommends that you adopt the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, Article forty four and Goal seven of the comprehensive plan. And yeah, I mean, this project can be finished, at least this part for now, so we thank you for for your time today and happy to answer any questions you might have.
We have any questions? Okay. Um, is there any public comment on the ordinance? Is that the end of the presentation? Um, is there any public comment online or in the room? Online. Do we have any questions of staff? We do not. The hearing is closed. We will now deliberate. And we will be looking for a motion to adopt, deny or remand the ordinance. We have a motion? To adopt the ordinance?
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance. Um, amending Article forty four floodplain zone of the Hood River County zoning ordinance and Goal seven areas subject to natural disasters and hazards of the county comprehensive plan to comply with Federal Emergency Management Agency's FEMA twenty twenty flood hazard model ordinance for Oregon and FEMA's twenty twenty four pre-implementation compliance measures is hereby.
Not yet, that's where we stop. So are you, um, so do we have a second for the motion to adopt?
Well, second.
Thank you, moved and seconded. Commissioner ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Babbitts?
Yes.
Commissioner Weathers?
Yes.
Commissioner Munzer? Chair votes yes, and we'll say it one more time, the ordinance, amended Article forty four floodplain zone of the Hood River County zoning ordinance and Goal seven areas subject to natural disasters and hazards of the county's comprehensive plan to comply with Federal Emergency Management Agency's FEMA's twenty twenty flood hazard model ordinance for Oregon and FEMA's twenty twenty four pre-implementation compliance measures HICMS is hereby adopted. And I have you, has the audience memorized it now that I have said it many times? It is hereby adopted. Thank you. And the next thing we have is a public hearing on the Evans Creek Road legalization. This time is scheduled for a public hearing regarding the legalization of Evans Creek Road for the Board of Commissioners to receive public testimony and for the surveyor to identify any public concerns related to the legalization. Board would like to clarify that. Board would like to clarify that the purpose of this hearing is for the governing body to determine whether the legalization of the road is in the public's interest. Testimony will be taken and considered for the final order legalizing the road. The following are the rules for the order for this hearing, rules of order, excuse me. No person shall speak without first being recognized by the chair and then coming forward and stating his or her full name and and residence address. For the record. Staff or agency representatives will provide background information relating to the request. For the commission. Public testimony will be taken. Once that is complete. The hearing will be closed and the commission will deliberate. So the hearing is open and we will ask for a staff presentation from Cory Weisner and Brad Frost, please.
There you are, Commissioners, I'm Brad Croxton, the county surveyor.
And I'm Cory Weisner, I'm the public works director.
So, uh, back in July, we had the, um, survey completed for Evans Creek Drive. It was completed by ODOT. This is for the culvert replacement, um, project that we have to do that, or they have to do, um. As part of the project, they need to determine. The, the legal ownership of the right of way. And investigating this, we discovered that the right of way. Had some nebulous descriptions may or may not have been dedicated correctly. Um, and some of the descriptions we have are not in the. The actual traveled way of the, of the roadway. Um, so this process gives us the opportunity to legalize the road. And forever set the record straight as to where the right of way is. And then ODOT can continue on with their project. We presented the survey's report back in September. The, the right of way was posted, the, uh, adjacent landowners were notified by mail, uh, as per the requirements. Um, and then here we are with the public here.
All right. Yes, it looked from the packet as though it had not been. Dealt with since nineteen, in nineteen forty-one, something caught their attention and then they didn't.
Yeah, yeah.
Through the process.
That was an attempt back then.
That was the original, yeah, the original was adopted in thirteen, but then in forty-one, they got partway to.
Yeah, yeah.
They got partway there and then.
They never followed through with the dedication, or at least we, we could not locate any document that dedicated the road. Possibly.
Well, we're happy to follow through sixty years later, so.
Yours.
Is there any more to the, uh, staff presentation?
No, I don't have any more.
So, uh, just to let you know, uh, it has been posted, we sent out mailers, um. To the affected property owners, uh, we have not received any comment to date. Uh, so just wanted to let you know that.
And is this the deadline for comments?
This is the public hearing for the, for the comments.
But does that close the government period?
Yes.
I can testify that it's been. That, that the signs are up because I passed them.
Yeah, they may have washed away.
No, they're still, they're still there.
The public has the opportunity to ask for compensation for structures within the right of way. You know, it's, it's a very narrow right of way. It's only forty feet wide. Um, there's no obvious structures in there. We, we have no comment or requests for, uh, compensation, so.
Very good. Is there any public testimony?
Not online.
Not online, okay. Are there any more questions from the Commissioners? So we will close the public hearing and direct staff to prepare the final order to be presented at the November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure Brad doesn't leave because we also have questions on the, um, Post Canyon Road.
Would you like to ask them?
Well, we can do that after we finish this.
We did, we just finished it.
That was the end of it.
Right.
Then our last.
Posted and it's.
Motion, the motion to direct staff. To prepare the order.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll need to have myself. The best interest finding and to direct staff to prepare the order.
Okay, we need a motion to. Find that it was in the best interest of.
Legalization is in the best interest of the county.
Okay.
Make that motion.
And. Direct them to hear the final order.
Yes.
Absolutely. That's your motion.
That's the one.
And we're getting a second for.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Any discussion? Commissioner ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Babbitts?
Yes.
Commissioner Weathers?
Yes.
Commissioner Munzer?
Yes.
Chair votes yes on the motion that she finally.
Spit out.
To spit out, yes. Okay. Now we're done.
Okay, so, um, uh, I'm sure you're aware, uh, uh, when, uh, Doug was working with forestry on the. Uh, permit program discovered that Post Canyon Road itself was not, uh, in. That the. Travel ways, that we called it?
Yeah, yeah.
Was not.
Travel.
As traveled is not where the, um, uh, where the, uh, where the surveys say should be. Uh, and we started, we asked for the process to be started to, um, to legalize that. And I'm just wondering, it's obviously, it's not something that is as important as this one, but, um. Can you give us some idea of where that is in process?
Yeah, yeah, some time ago, you ordered us to do the survey, um, that survey was contracted out. Um, and. That's where it is in the process now, um. It's a lot of backwards and forwards between me and the contractor to complete the survey. It's very close, um, you know, that's. Um, delay is probably all on me. Um, working two days a week in, in two counties, trying to keep up with my statutory requirements that, uh, review surveys, um. Have not prioritized this project perhaps as I should have. Um, just waiting for a, a break in the survey reviews to come through that, that never happened, um. But I will, um, endeavor to get that survey complete and present it to you soon, hopefully in December or January.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm gonna say January. I can only agree to one thing to the commission a month, so.
And you have something for December?
I have something. You have to do this November and then, uh, yeah, have something else.
So is that a personal rule or?
It is capacity. So yes.
So yes.
So that I don't, uh.
Boundaries.
Yeah.
It's so that you'll continue to be here every.
Yes.
I'm not suggesting a priority on this. I'm simply asking what to expect.
Update.
So don't consider this like, I can't wait to see this, and we gotta see this. I just. I, it's stuck in my head.
What's that? You said you ordered it. That's what I heard.
It's stuck in my head that we requested this a while ago and I want to make sure that it's still happening and that's, I heard it's happening and that's fine.
I would like to get it off my desk.
Yeah.
For a long time.
I think I would probably like that too.
Just want to highlight, there is another legalization in process. Um, that we're gonna do in-house, I think. Um, so that one is still in process as well. So that's Neal Creek.
When you get to the one in front of my house, let me know so I can recuse myself.
And that's the one that's been going on.
Post Canyon's been the one that's been going on for.
Okay, Neal Creek is new.
Newish.
Okay, very good. All right. Anything else?
No, thank you.
You are excused until next month.
Thank you.
Are there any, is there anyone here for public comment or is there anyone online for public comment?
I'd like to request that the letter that I think all of us received.
Oh, correct. I made myself note.
Robert Duddles.
Bob Duddles. And, and we want to put it in the record?
Well, so I'd like to, first of all, I would put in the record, so I don't think Steph has even seen it yet. So I suspect it was just sent to us. Okay, so you have, okay. And, and, um, you know, what I saw on the surface was something where someone's, uh, where. I would hope that there are accommodations that can be made so that this man can hunt, says he. Has characteristically hunted, but I don't know any of the specifics. I don't want to ask you to talk about it now because. You haven't had time, time to study it, but I would like to know at some point. Um, I, 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 I'm simply hopeful that, uh, what sounds like a reasonable request is, uh, for ability to hunt can be accommodated.
Very good. It's in process now. We will look into it and probably have. Next month, something to report now. Um, okay, so on to the county administrators' report. Okay, good evening, uh, which I suspect doesn't really begin to cover all the things that you actually did.
Oh, yes.
Uh, yeah, a few highlights and I will provide a few highlights of my, uh, my administrator's report. Um, at the last meeting, you had identified, um, wanting me to come forward, uh, with positions that would be refilled. So we currently have nine and a half positions open in the county and we are looking to fill the senior accountant and the HR generalist. Um, those are just two backbone positions that, uh, we must go forward with. Um, Sherry will be doing the quarterly report. She needed to close out the end of September, September thirtieth. And then we have had the auditors, auditors onsite, uh, the last, uh, week and a half, new auditors, um, who are, uh. Really doing a good job.
Do you remind me of their name?
Uh.
I shouldn't have said that.
Right? Yes, Lou Exinger. Thank you, thank you. All right. Um, and for our new business item, um, Sherry did prepare a five-year forecast, so we can talk about that at. That point in time. Um, we, uh, in our courthouse facilities work, we have, um, two identified. Um, options, uh, they're putting together a final, um. A final report for us and I'm expecting to schedule that. Uh, we're trying to time it out with the restart of the AOC, of JD Courthouse Task Force. Uh, which several of us attended on, well, Cory and I were there in person on Friday, Chair Uier was online, as was Ryan Beach online on Friday. Uh, listening into that, um, and so we'll want to deliberate with the board in terms of. The ask that is coming forward, Commissioner Babbitts, I want to talk about. What that ask, uh, might be. Um, we did hear, uh, I know everybody's kind of been. Questioning some of the costs, um, at the task force, we did hear about Benton County's courthouse that is. Under construction currently at seventeen hundred and eighty-five dollars a foot. So, um, it is, uh. Yes, and, and expensive process, so, um, we want to really think about this. This is the future of our county. Uh, we think there are some really good options, um, but putting in the appropriate phase plan for us and how we'll approach that. It's going to be pretty critical, uh, in the next couple of weeks. Just to get to the, the AOC or JB Task Force. Um, for the record, I did want to address the Oregon Government Ethics Commission opinion. Uh, so early on, our council, Lisa, had provided us, um, with guidance in regards to our employees. Uh, and as you all know, this is the ethics, uh, opinion that identified that if you feed people during meetings. If you feed your employee and employees and others, it, uh, needs to be included as compensation. Um, I think, uh, we will, so we will update our employee handbook to reflect that, that will be coming. Um, in regards to elected officials' compensation, um, AOC is working through a process because. How that gets approved, um, in terms of when you approve. Compensation for those who have their future terms somewhat complicated, so, um. We are waiting for some clarifications on that one.
And, and just so I'm sure I understand this, there's no de minimis exception in this.
That's the definition statute.
Excuse me?
That's part of the issue is, um, and it's my understanding, AOC staff is going to be engaging more of us. I do engaging, it is, I just want to group this fall to address it. Um, in part, the opinion. Is very broad.
Right.
Um, and, uh, there is a conflict between the statutory definitions for exemptions, um, for gifts. Limits, um, with the opinion itself. So that's what we're trying to rectify. The issue with having all of you vote, um, on incorporating it as part of your official compensation is. You would have a conflict, so you're sort of having to do round robin of resolutions if you want to go through that process. Uh, because you would have to conflict yourself out, obviously, on anything voting on. Um, in part, that's OCCA Council and AOC are working on. How to address that.
But so right now, there's an opinion in place which says that all of those Kit Kat bars that, um, Commissioner Weathers has been scarfing down. Are, uh, are actually considered compensation. Right. Thanks.
So more to come on that issue. Um, the other item I wanted to highlight is, um, we will be meeting with Hood River adopted dog. They did. Uh, we did have a holdover provision in our existing contract that allows for a month of the month. Um, Vermont, Vermont and road concerns, so we had, um, East Fork here, obviously this evening. Um, in conversations with the neighbors up there, they would like to have a larger meeting. I think from staff's perspective. Uh, we'll need to have some internal meetings first. There are so many. Um, issues at play there in regards to, uh, that road specifically, um, so, um. We, I have communicated, uh, to Mark Johnson that we will entertain a meeting. Um, and that, but our staff needs to meet first in, in that regard, and then we can follow up. Um. Just want to, um. Again, we're looking at November third for a potential special meeting. We had said that in October, we would come back to you. With a, uh, uh, work session or focus group in regards to the forest management plan. Um, obviously, this is, uh, we're, we're beyond that right now, so we're looking at a special meeting November third. Uh, and I believe Sophie has reached out to you in regard to, um, a different location because this room is booked for some emergency management training.
No, I haven't seen an invitation yet, so, um, you haven't, I didn't miss it, did I?
I can forward it to you.
Oh, did you send it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, and, uh, this is the time of year when we are gathering openings for all of our advisory boards. Um, our advisory board bylaws do identify that we appoint in January. Um, that is prob- problematic for some of our boards that want to get started, uh, with new boards, uh, in January. Um, and so we're going to be reviewing that process in regards to a small change in our bylaws that could bring those early. Um, so that our, uh, advisory board work can start in January. Um, unless there was a prior concern with that timing. Um, but we have, uh, openings coming on the Fairboard Forest Advisory Committee. Forest Recreational Trails Advisory Committee, uh, Hood River White Salmon Bridge Authority. Um, the Mid Columbia Housing Authority, Mount Hood Economic Alliance. The Planning Commission and of course, uh, the Columbia Ford Scenic Area. So quite a few opportunities for us to put the word out.
So would we be, uh. Appointing in December, we want to have people appointed by January?
That I think would be ideal, but we will look at our bylaws and the mechanism by which we do, uh, change their, that timing. Uh, but for all of you, do you remember any specific, um, reason why we might have done the January timing?
In the past?
Because that's when we were elected.
To correspond with newly elected votes?
Perhaps.
I think that's.
Yeah, it was.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well. Did we, did at the same time as we debate up the, um. The, the committees?
Yeah.
Nothing has a need to be tailored.
So we, we will take a look at that and bring that back. You for consideration, potential change in the bylaws that we can appoint early. Okay. Uh, I think those were the, uh, major highlight for my report.
Very good. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? Should I start to my right or my left? Do you think? Commissioner Munzer, we'll start and find out if you've had any good meals.
Uh, my kid. We actually had a couple loans come forward that we approved, which was kind of nice. We haven't had a lot of applications for that due to. Everything that's been going on in the higher powers. Uh, but we did, uh, approve a few loans that. I think we'll be going through here very soon. Uh, the watershed group, I attended the project tour of the Lower East Fork Habitat Enhancement Project. Um, very good work, pretty cool, um. Had a lot of conversations with those people when I was there and I think it'll be great when we move down. Hopefully with our project down here. Uh. And I think you were invited, Commissioner Babbitts, to our annual barbecue for the county. And somehow you must have missed that because that, I, I was there. And I ate and it was fantastic and I got to visit with a lot of the county staff. It was, uh, it was a real good time. And you weren't there and you were invited, so. Anyways, uh, Gasket Locks. Uh, obviously, they took their food and beverage off the ballot this fall, but. Uh, obviously, they took their food and beverage off the ballot this fall, but they're going to be revisiting it and trying to. Decide if they want to change about how they're going to go about saddle or if they're. If they're going to raise that rate, lower the rate, or just not do it at all. So that's something that they. Just basically touched on that they were going to leave it at sometime in November or December. What I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Weathers.
Well, just gonna scarfing one of my Kit Kats, so I have time to report.
You'll have to pay for that.
Have to pay for that, yeah. So, um, last week, um, had um, out of economic alliance. And uh, uh, North Core meetings back to back and it was actually on a travel day, so. Not that anybody will give me any sympathy, but I actually got to the airport five hours before my flight to uh. To to zoom calls to both of those, um, all of those scheduled meetings.
And one of them is North Park?
Yes.
Commissioner Weathers, that's really appreciated, because I know that it's, you know, going to North Core meetings is really important. And to to have to get there in time to do it at the airport is something that is actually appreciated.
Well, um, I actually wasn't looking for sympathy, but thank you.
Well, I'm not sympathizing, I'm appreciating.
Yeah, yeah. So, and just so you know, if they were five hours early, you can actually not check uh your luggage yet, so I have to stay outside. I have to stay outside of the terminal. The devil was making, so just so now you know, so now you know, yes.
Yeah.
So, uh, that would account for economic alliance. We have a pet for a number of months. Uh, we did approve a micro loan. Um, that we actually had to speed through the process fairly quickly, but McCann, it had actually gone to McCann uh previously. They helped us out as well because um, no, we had acquired a loss. Loss. Loan loss program from the state of Oregon, that actually there was a um, time clock that we had to at least make one loan. Or lose uh, lose that funding, so um, that was, that was good news. Um. On the North Core side, um, regular monthly meetings, but also we have a cross functional group that is meeting weekly. We have been for. I think tomorrow will be six weeks. We're meeting two hours a week to go over the facility assessment and um. Make recommendations to the board for future steps for long term sustainability of the organization that we're all. Obviously concerned about it, continue to report on, so um, there myself, Sheriff English. Um, one of the juvenile directors, business manager. Um, um, adult side, um, and. Juvenile side are all participating. We do have a facilitator there. Um, the meetings are moving along at sometimes swift rates and sometimes very slow. It is, it is a process and then we've scheduled out. Continue to work for at least the next couple of months. Um, it's been full participation, so that's great. Um, nothing to report there, mostly just because we're going to make recommendations. Um, and would like to keep that. What's not decided on outside of the, of the three and or any concerns that. It may change the organization, so that is moving along uh on the, on the um. Um, sustainability side or for this year's budget due to um, um, open positions. Um, we are continuing to stay on track, um, which, you know, seems to be. What has kept um, a reasonable beginning fund balance at the end of each year when we're projecting to. Um, burn through that every year. Um. Just yet another year or so, uh, again, concerned if we would ever staff that. Just don't have resources may happen, so but, so this year is still in kind of. Better than is, better than expected, but still concerning longer, so.
Because part of it is because of the unfilled positions.
Correct. That's the driver.
Right.
And that has been the driver.
Very good.
Okay, so I, I did not attend, I did not attend any uh events where food was served.
Well, that's what we have, Commissioner.
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Babitz.
I also did not attend any events where food was served.
Well, you could have.
I could have, but I'm apparently there's something screwy with my calendar, so I have to surface that after the meeting.
Curly fries were really good.
That's a special weakness of mine.
Apparently mine too.
Okay, so uh, I'll just uh, uh, talk about the bridge, um, and really, uh. Nothing new, I just want to make it clear that uh, we're in the design phase on the bridge now. Uh, we cannot begin a construction phase until we have all construction funding lined up, and we certainly do not have construction funding lined up. We do not have any new information on the infra monies which were uh allocated for us. Uh, a year and a half ago, uh, and we do not have any further information on the bridge investment program. Um, the grants, grant process for either uh, the. Last calendar year or this calendar year. So, um, no new information on that. Uh, obviously, with the governor shutdown, there's probably no one working on that either, so I wouldn't expect anything in the immediate uh future. Um, in terms of that, so right now, we're just designing a bridge and uh, it's about a year and a half process to do that.
Very good.
And it should be more than seventeen thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars per square foot, correct?
Much more.
Seventeen hundred, that was.
Almost seventeen hundred.
Seventeen eighty-five. Yeah, seventeen thousand.
It's seventeen thousand.
Yeah, that's something, better than up to seventeen thousand, yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
I attended a Columbia Gorge Health Council last month, and there are a lot of concerns about the Affordable Care Act subsidies. And how that's going to affect premium rates for healthcare and affect just local clinics. Um, and the offer, and the services are going to be able to offer the local communities, so more to come on that. Um, attended uh Mid Columbia Center for Living, and really the big update there is that originally the. Columbia Gorge Resolution Center that we were hoping to. Um. Build in Wasco County. We're still moving forward, forward with that, but the original plans were that the money was going to go to Wasco County. And Wasco County was going to own the building and they were going to donate the land. And as a board, we decided that that was not in the best interest of Mid Columbia Center for Living and all involved partners. We want Center for Living to own it and operate it. And so we have asked uh, the director Al Barton to write a letter to Wasco County. And thank them for all of their leadership and work in that and help direct all of the funds from the Oregon Health Authority. To um Center for Living and to look for property and or land to build elsewhere for. An eighteen bed facility. Um, there's still about fourteen million dollars allocated for that project, and we recognize the need and staff feel like. They can still staff it and it's just a need for folks to be able to get. Rehabilitation services in the gorge. Um. And then uh, attended a community partners collaborative put on by the next door. This was the first of, it seems like a series of meetings. There was forty-two participants. Uh, they were like the superintendent was there, so a lot of folks from different schools, community-based organizations, city police. Healthcare was there, the county was invited. Um, I attended to represent the county because Alison was at another meeting. Um, and basically, um, the ask, they broke us up into small groups and the ask was, what are. You hearing from the community, what are the needs? Um, trying to figure out like, what can the next door do to help? Support what our community is asking for, and the themes were immigration services. Um, and correct information. Um. And it's just the first of, I think, the next meeting is in November and trying to figure out what. Community partners can offer, so we're not duplicating services and that we're able to communicate. What resources we have, what's available, who can respond when there is need. ICE, of course, came up. Often, um, and then also. You know, yeah, what to do with. ICE shows up at schools, and so a lot of it was immigration issues, so. Um, I just saw the email come through maybe like an hour ago on the note, so I can forward that to you, Alison, but it's still really hype. Just connecting folks. Um, agriculture was there also, um. I think Ian Chandler from like cherry growers and folks just trying to figure out what's available and what. We can do. I think that's what makes it ever so special is that. We're able and willing to get together and figure out how we can support our community. More to come.
So we've been getting emails from AOC concerning the kind of stuff. Are you, so we as a county do not contract with the state on that, that we do it through um, Center for Living. So, um, does that, does that whole discussion affect Center for Living or Center for Living contract in a different way that? It doesn't matter, or am I making any sense?
Say that again with AOC.
So AOC has been having, has been encouraging uh, the uh counties not to sign. The agreements being submitted to them by the state. Uh, because they are trying to force the state into giving a better uh, in into better treatment.
Hmm.
Uh, and.
I have to ask, I can ask Al.
I'm just not sure, I, I know, I forwarded this to Alison when we first started talking about it.
Um, so this was, uh, yes, the issue with AOC in regards to signing the behavioral health agreements. Um, because there was a clause in there that the agreements uh were funded to the extent that they were funded.
Right.
And so uh, AOC is suggesting that those agreements not get signed. Um, I did reach out to Al Barton and he, he did indicate that they were a part of the group that is pushing back. And yeah, and they've been working through county council as well.
That, I just, I just want to know that I'm safe and ignoring, that's, if someone else is worrying about it, yeah. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm relieved too, because I was wondering the same thing. Um, let's see, uh, I attended the McCarrick, um, the Mid Columbia. Air Cultural Research Extension Center um, meeting and. They, of course, were dealing with budget cuts because they're heavily funded from Oregon State, which has cuts. And one of the things that they're hoping to eventually get is an economist, which will be a welcome um addition. To the extension to the um, to my character. The, and um, just incidentally, they are affected by this H one B visa hundred thousand dollar. Issue where they've decided that for H one B visas, people have to pay a hundred thousand dollars from the administration. And so many of the scientists who do our research in agriculture. And um, and they've been affected by that because to get here or to go visit home and come back has been. Um, become, and this is for science, scientists all through the Oregon State system and clearly through all of the state systems. Of education across the country. So it's affecting their ability to hire people to do research. And I heard the updates on legislation at the AOC meeting, which was chaired by. Commissioner Babitz and um, the R one act, because the transportation bill is still somewhat in limbo. There's no going there. We um, heard about micro mobility happening in other places and an update on the sidewalks, which was interesting. These sidewalks that are being updated for ADA compliance are partly the result apparently of the ability now to be much more exact in the. In the um, degree, they can very easily make them exactly the right degree, and so, and there's a woman there that. Uh, travels by wheelchair at all times, and she was really articulate about explaining the reason why that. Those angles matter so much because she said otherwise, even sometimes in especially in Portland, she was from Portland in. In a pond, you know, it was interesting from her point of view, there was better sidewalk. Uh, entrances and exits have really made her life easier, so. Um, and I also listened to the same Zoom meeting, to the Zoom meeting with Alison Payne. Where he went to and Alison asked a couple of excellent questions about the legislative fix needed to use county property. And the uh, need for sliding scale for smaller counties, because we need all the same things that a county courthouse. Of a much larger county needs, and it doesn't scale. With the number of people that we have paying taxes versus, um, you know, like, can we. I think that was really inarticulate.
Yeah, so you, you did fine, but I'd like, we each will have to recite this at various times in the next couple of years. So I just want to make sure that we all understand what we're talking about. Uh, uh, we have a situation where. Uh, there are thirty-six counties in the state, uh, eventually all of them will need courthouses replaced, uh, because courthouses don't last forever. Uh, in the process of replacing courthouses, the only counties that have been able to replace courthouses successfully are ones where. Either they have a data center to pay for it, they are one of the very largest courthouse uh, uh, counties in the state. So the cost per person is low enough, they don't have to go to the public for it, or they have a natural disaster like climate falls, having an earthquake. Short of that, we're not in a position where uh, we will ever be able to, if you look at the number of dollars we would have to do. In an ask to the public to simply do a outright replacement of our courthouse, it would be multiple dollars per thousand. You remember those numbers you saw that had.
Cent per thousand. The numbers that were sent.
Right, well, the total assessment for city residents is fifty, is a fourteen dollars and ninety-two cents, I think it was, and for. Other, the, the smallest ones, twelve dollars or something. Imagine adding, you know, four or five dollars to that. Uh, in order to, and now actually, there's a compression also, um. Actually, it would be a bond, so it wouldn't put some compression, forget about that, but the, the concept that we would ever be able to do this outright is. Crazy, and the legislature will have to address that at some point. Uh, in the short term, uh, we're looking to do. Phase, reasonable phased uh work, so that we're uh. Addressing our, uh, some of our facilities issues and some of our uh, or needs to house people doing various tasks for the county. But um, the, the, the thought that they, that we could simply acquire a new courthouse. And ask the citizens for bond to pay for it, it's a non-starter. That's seventeen hundred and fifty dollars or even seventeen thousand.
Thank you.
So.
Uh, and the other thing I did was go to the forestry meeting and um, at this meeting. Doug went through the uh, upcoming timber sales, which I found interesting. So with that, we will move on to port, um, the quarterly reports from county departments. Is that just something we accept and we.
I, yes, so they are in your packet, and yes, we're in our new process of having a couple departments each. Uh, quarter come forward and is that live and in person? Yeah.
We'll just have to get our finding down. Okay.
Yeah, we could easily start at four today and then completely on time. Right?
That is impressive.
No, my point is that this, this wasn't too bad, a, in terms of, the amount that you put on the agenda was reasonable, we just started later, we shouldn't have.
There we go.
Yeah.
Very good. Um, so now we would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I would make a motion to accept the consent agenda as um, published.
I'm second that.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Babitz.
Yes.
Mr. Ready.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Manzer.
Yes.
Chair votes, yes. So, the next item in our agenda is to have a discussion on the application or. Should I call it lipstick? That's what I hear people calling it. It's a.
You can spell it out.
I can, I can, but it's a, it has no vowels in it, so it's hard to say. Um, so, we are being asked to, to, we've interviewed and we need to consider appointing Timothy Ware. To Lipstick to fill the vacancy. To lipstick to fill the vacancy. So can we have a motion or a discussion?
I would move that we appoint Timothy Ware to the vacancy in lipstick.
That's second.
Is there any discussion?
No, I'm not regarding Timothy Ware.
Okay.
All right.
That's mysterious.
Yeah, I was just wondering about like voting members for the lipstick because maybe that's separate. Who votes, who doesn't?
I think it would make sense to bring back the lipstick overview and the committee members and have um. Uh, the sheriff's department who's been running that providing overview.
And we have the sheriff coming next.
Next month. So you would like to ask him to discuss and explain lipstick to us?
Well, I mean, I went to a meeting and I was told I couldn't vote and then I was told to vote online recently, so I was like, oh, I thought I couldn't vote. But we'll talk about it the next meeting.
Okay, very good, all right, good to know.
Did they have snacks?
No.
Food?
Yes, actually they did, if I remember vegetables.
We'll make sure that you at least know.
And pizza.
Lisa's keeping track of all of that for us.
We should stop.
Okay.
But if they're gonna have us work through dinner, what's. When you, when you expect, um. Okay, so.
Yes.
Uh, I was. Uh, it. It, it seems as though Mr. Weir has done all sorts of things that qualify him for this, and his enthusiasm, so I'm glad with this.
Very happy if I, yeah.
All right, so I guess it's time to vote, Commissioner Munzer.
Yes.
Commissioner Weathers.
Yes.
Yes.
Sir Babitz.
Yes.
And the ready chair votes, yes. And he's probably not watching, but I want to thank him for applying. And our new business will start with the. Resolution, we're going to discuss a resolution authorizing the commissioners to sign the document about septic. Systems and it doesn't say on here that we're going to have a presentation, but are we?
We can, um, yes, we, we have staff here, so we have our environmental manager and Eric Walker and I. I just want to thank the two of them for putting this together um as a result of the um process that we went through. With the city looking at potential annexation areas. Coupled with the conversations we've been having internally about the issues that we're having in. The urban growth area with regard to failing septics. Um, our staff wanted a a statement from the board. Um, obviously, this is governed by state law, but when you're dealing with property owners. Having the strength of a resolution of support from the board behind it uh really is helpful in that eff- effort. Um, so this resolution um restates the state law with uh with regard to this issue and then. Um, provides the strong statement in support of uh. Getting property on the on to city sewer within, when they have legal access.
So just to be clear, we are, we are having. Being the resolution forward that affirms state law.
Yes.
The word confused is, it uses two terms, it says where uh that you're required to, there's the state losses you're required to attach when you. Have, uh, oh, we have an expert here, it says, uh, when it's legally. Allowed and when it's physically available, and I'm wondering what physically available means, and I bet you spend a lot of time with that.
Um, physically available would be, say, the sewer line is at an elevation that it will work. Or they would have to pump it, or they are unable to get some type of easement through. To connect something like.
Is there?
Physical.
Uh, how hard do you, I mean, you can say anything's possible at certain level, but how hard do you have to try? You know, what, what's? How, how far do we stretch the term uh physically available? Um. What's, what's reasonable?
That's part of the luxury of this is that that's not my decision to make, that's actually the city's. Decision to make, so they have to make that.
Then I can give you an example, um, Westwood Drive, there was a house that in the urban growth area. And if I remember correctly, um, sewer was available across Interstate eighty four within the distance requirements. But it wasn't necessarily deemed physically available because of the cost of making that improvement to. Or or maybe it was in order to cross ID four, you had to go, you know, over and across and back. And so, um, so in that case, the city said, no, it it is physically not available at this time based on those. Physical um issues.
And.
So what would happen if you had a place where the septic system was failing and there was no room? For an another new system? And it was not physically available for some reason.
Well, there is a clause in the EQ rule that um I would have to consider a reasonable repair. That's very vague statement, but I would do my best to. Do something on the property to alleviate that hazard.
Have we gotten to the point where there are systems? That can be built, they're very expensive, but uh and use far less.
Yes, there are treatment systems out there now, they're called alternative treatment systems. Turn in treatment technologies. And those in rule allow for a drain field approximately fifty percent of the size of a regular drain field. So on a lot of these. That would be where we would end up. Going in, but we might not even have. Room for what would be fifty percent of a drain field, but depending on what soils are there and whether or not we have high groundwater or other issues. Um, we would be able to do something that would reasonably allow that homeowner to continue to occupy the property.
But all drain fields have finite lives.
They do.
So you're kind of putting off into the far future.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you for all that, do we have any more?
Yeah, can you walk us through, so this came up most recently with Elliot. Drive houses, right, where houses along Elliot Drive had failures of the septic systems. Um, and then I got confused about who said that. That it was the, the, did the city say that they could attach, but they didn't want to pay for it, or what was the?
It was having to annex in that particular case, and so um. They would have had to have gone through the annexation process, um, there was obviously time and expense involved in that. Um, and I think there was a desire to get something built, and so there is a provision that allows. Um, an out currently, if if it can be accommodated on site.
So that the Elliot issues weren't failures of the septic systems, either, they were both. Um, the most recent ones where people wanted, one was a remodel, and they wanted to add bedrooms, which would have. Made their septic system that's existing undersized for that size of a home. Um, and I believe the other one, they were interested in an ADU in a garage that they had just built. And that gentleman was able to um connect to city sewer and. Annex and the other project over there scaled back on their remodel and to a number of bedrooms that. I was able to authorize them to continue using the existing septic system here.
I'm sure the ADU one, what did you say happened there?
He was able to annex and connect to.
He was able to.
So that's one lot that annexed itself. Separate from.
Yeah.
And so what are we attempting to accomplish using, so there's a whole bunch of other houses in Elliot Road on septic. Uh, what are we attempting to accomplish here, what, what's? Wha- what, what does this resolution do that helps make that situation better?
Uh, from a communication standpoint, I think it sends a fair message, um, and so the city has a resolution. Uh, that they have been utilizing from twenty sixteen that says that they will not allow the extension of sewer without annexation. And so this is backing it up, providing a resolution from our board saying that when it is legally available. Um, that uh uh access to sewer is what state law requires. I think these two things together help send a message um in regards to the administration, uh, where we were. We've been spending a lot of time going back and forth in terms of how to accommodate. And this provides a clear uh communication tool to utilize.
And it also removes ambiguity for our department heads, correct? They, there's a clear statement of what's going to happen.
I believe it will enable, well, I I. Be frank, gotten a lot of pressure from people about this since the resolution was passed in twenty sixteen. And this would just be another tool for me to be able to say, I'm sorry, my hands are tied by the EQ rule, this is what our committee commissioners have said, and this is what our city. Um, resolution says. Talk to your elected officials, I have to follow policy and.
So should you, you view this as a helpful thing to you doing your job? Thanks. That's, I probably should have just asked that at the beginning.
Great. We also, Sophie, I don't know if you're able to show the mapping tool, so just to again show what our GIS team. Uh, can do, uh, there's been a mapping tool that's been created, uh, and the work that we did with PSC was helpful in all of this. Um, which uh can pinpoint a property and then identify where facilities are um. Easily for staff, and so thanks to uh Mike and Jake for helping to put this together, but yes, you can. Click on a property, uh, January one, the proximity uh changes from three hundred feet to two hundred feet.
Yeah, for repairs.
For repairs.
On an existing structural.
That's us.
And so there is our tool at work, um, we, we clicked on the property and then um.
And so the, the purple lines, the magenta lines are sewer lines or?
Yes, that's. And then where my cursor is on this. Key, uh, you can scroll down and it will give you how far away each one is.
Right.
Maybe download these maps. Um, you can create like a different kind of.
It's almost too much fun.
Yes. Um, but very helpful again in providing information for our staff and then for the public.
Yeah, and there's multiple layers on here, so you can tell if someone is. Connected to city sewer that's um outside the city limits, but inside their own growth boundary or vice versa, there's layers to. You have to pull all that up, so it'll be very useful for staff in the future, I think, I've been here long enough that I kind of know where the sewer lines are and I can kind of. Put it on the map and say, well, right, we'll talk to the city, because I think you're pretty close, um, but. Future, in the future, this tool will be very useful.
Great. Thank you. All right, so we are looking for a motion to approve the resolution. Um, for septic systems. For. This time, having to hook up some systems.
I would move that we approve the resolution that staff prepared concerning the hookups to septic systems as submitted.
Second motion. Yeah, the motion in a second, is there any more discussion? Commissioner Munzer.
Yes.
Commissioner Weathers.
Yes.
Commissioner Murray.
Yes.
Commissioner Powell. Chair votes, yes, did you vote?
Yes.
Out of order. You voted out of order. Very good. Um, and thank you very much for the work on that.
And for explaining.
Yes.
And now, um, then the uh. Number B is a new B on. Agenda is to discuss the appointment of a replacement for Senator Bonham. Who is resigning his position. And we will be dealing with that on Thursday, and do we have an update on how that? Looks. We've been trying to figure out. Um, how. What the process is and exactly how, exactly what the process is.
Right, and so I think uh they were deliberating this afternoon in order to develop an agenda for Thursday. Okay, I think Sophie has been watching her email to see if we uh have received anything about that.
It was they.
Wait, and it's, okay. So they delivered the preliminary packet in the agenda. And they've also covered um all the comment or question script. So can you kind of relay what? All uh question specific or?
We, it would, we are going to meet on Thursday at. At one PM.
Virtually.
Virtually with the four counties involved, Wasco, Clackamas. And Wasco. And. And you will give us the update, I guess, on um the more specifics that we've heard. Do we have more specifics?
Yeah, judging by all of them, okay. Uh, so each county is invited to provide up to two questions, all nominees will have an equal opportunity to answer each fourth question. Um, Clackamas County is currently formulating our questions and uh there's a goal to share them uh by tomorrow afternoon. Chair Roberts had asked that each board shares their questions as soon as possible so that we can avoid the duplication of them. And then they go over how to submit our comments. And and then the rest is the agenda and the script.
And is there a deliberation in the process? Yeah, I know, I understand.
Uh, yeah, there's deliberations towards the end right before the vote.
And are, is anyone allowed to, i- i- or are any of the commissioners allowed to participate, or is it being funneled through the chairs or? Did they say anything like that?
Will we be able to caucus as a county?
I don't know yet.
Okay.
We each have an individual vote, right?
Yes, and we will vote, as I understand it, we will vote individually. And then they're weighed. And they're weighted and there's a, I saw something today about how they're waiting for it, I don't know if that's.
Right, so it's like sixty percent.
Right.
We're three point.
Right, but they're five of us, so in terms of.
Seventeen, I think it was.
Yeah, compared to sixty, seventy, forty, Clackamas, yeah. Did we lose the recording? So.
So we, at this time, I believe we should to discuss probably our questions, and so. Um, I'll bet you have some suggestions.
Yeah, so actually, so I I spent some time thinking about this and and I actually came up with two questions. And but they're, they're, they're pretty basic, but they're a little bit pointed and that's where I kind of want to. See how you guys feel about this, uh, there's all sorts of different ways you could look at how we would want to. See this position, position filled, and people have said to me things about, you know, what politically makes most sense, blah, blah, blah. And I come down to that we are a nonpartisan board whose job is to serve the residents of our county. And what our county needs is someone serving in our senate seat who, who will um. You know, bring us the goods as, as a, as a county that has needs and has, it wants to be part of all the discussions that happen in Salem. Uh, and so the two things that I would be most interested in. From someone is that because we are by definition, provides by rule, appointing the Republican, which means we're appointing some of the minority party. Uh, in what ways have they demonstrated the ability to work with colleagues in the majority to advance our needs? And so it's pretty fundamental that we uh that we select someone who uh. Who says good things about being able to work with the minority, uh, with majority, I mean. Because we don't need someone there who's going to say. Those Democrats, the majority suck and so we're not playing ball. Yeah, concerned about that.
Super majority.
Thank you. Uh, and but there's, you know, we have a senator who's leaving, having participated in the walkout, so.
Sure.
Uh, so that's a re- reasonable thing to do, and and then the second one is a little more pointed. Um, which is, um, I want to know that the person that we choose is going to be focused. On the district in the next year and not on another task, and I'll be very specific about why I say that, because this is public media and we should. We should be honest and specific, uh, everyone. All the rumors, all the political tea leaves say that Christine Drazen is planning to run for governor. And I'm very concerned about choosing someone who is going to spend the next year running for governor. Uh, and uh what that would mean for us, so I, uh, you know, if, if I were talking to someone directly, I would say. Uh are you? Can you tell us that you are not running for governor? And if if they can't tell us that, then I would have trouble voting for that person, but maybe there's another way to look at it. But the the question that I want to ask is uh. If they're planning to be involved in another task that's going to uh go to take up all their time in the next year.
And compete with what we need in the district.
Yeah, and I don't know if we want to be shy about saying, you know, will you say that you're not ready for governor, or if we want to get up about it.
These questions that we, if we submit these questions, they're going to go to Clackamas County's chair, who is organizing this. And they're going, presumably, they're going to share the questions with people that want to prepare for talking to us on Thursday, correct?
I would assume so.
I would assume. So um we would, she would have time to. Everybody would have time to tell us how they thought they felt about that. Um are there any other questions that have occurred to people? Commissioner Weathers?
No, I just wanted to actually comment about um Commissioner Babett's questions. Um I think that's fair. Uh I think those are both really fair questions. Um. You know, in a perfect world, the first question would answer the second one, or or in a perfect world, the first question to me wouldn't. Matter much the second question, but we all know that when running for um that particular seat. Um it would take up an enormous amount of time and possibly not get the um the represent, representation that our um. Instituents deserve. So I think those are fair questions. That's all.
I think people can make whatever conclusion they want to out of the answers.
Sure.
Uh I don't know that you would all agree with me that you wouldn't vote for someone who was planning to run for governor. Uh but uh I think it would be helpful to know that.
Regardless, whether or not a person would vote for or not for that, it's still a question.
And then, you know, I'm sure because of legal requirements, then I can be able to say, yes, I'm running for governor, but they can say. Uh no, I won't admit to not running.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how to ask that question.
Right, that's what I I I'm just direct about it. That's what I want to know.
Oregonians, the district.
I just, I don't want to ask it in a way that someone can weasel out of it and and give an answer that doesn't tell us anything.
Why can't you ask ask it directly then?
I don't know. The, I mean, maybe you and I would do that. I don't know. I I feel like other people might be offended.
Yeah, they could just say, I'm focused on D twenty-six right now.
You know, whatever answer we get tells us something. And if they don't want to answer that question directly, that tells you something. And if they do answer it directly, that tells you something. And if they say they can't. I mean, the answer, people have an op, you know, when people answer, then you, you know, it's not always yes or no. They they can answer whatever they want, so.
We do have the names of the three nominees, and we've all got those, right?
Yeah, it's John Graham, Christine Drayson, and Jeff Helfrich.
Very good. So do we need to actually hammer out the language of this question tonight and submit it?
They want this submitted tomorrow.
I think it's a good idea for us to do it.
Okay, so could we um? Can we just dictate to you and you write down the the question that you want? Read it back to us and we'll decide whether or not we want it. Okay, so why don't you just give it a try, Arthur? Questions first. Anybody have other questions? Okay, so let's start with this and just um state the first one. And then she'll read it back to us and we'll decide if we want to tweak it.
Yeah, so um uh since you are in the minority party. Uh in what ways have you demonstrated an ability to work with your colleagues in the majority to advance the needs? Of our district. There's a tense call, don't think, but.
No, I think that's okay. I think so. The needs of our.
It just occurs to me that two of the people are sitting state reps, the third is not. So I just want to make sure that question makes sense for the third.
We could say is, you know, what we have you demonstrated, or would you demonstrate? If you want to add that, or would you demonstrate? Because there's a guy that would have to demonstrate in the future. And you could talk about how he demonstrated. You want to add that?
I think you make a lot of, yeah, I'm not sure. Could you, could you play it back?
Since you are in the minority party, in what ways have you demonstrated or would you demonstrate the ability to work with the minority to advance the needs of our district?
Is it you, Clacky?
No, I'm sure, I don't, but what are you guessing?
Makes sense.
Does it work?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It makes sense to me. I'm good with that.
Okay.
Are you checking grammar?
I'm wondering too how, you know, rural Hood River doesn't get overshadowed by county, how they're going to make sure.
Well, Multnomah County South issues Clackamas County. Because it's only, we have, so this district includes east Multnomah County, which is rural. It's actually very similar to the river. Um but it's the, the problem is that we got all of Oregon City, which is a large urban area.
You do?
Because I thought it was the rural, is Oregon City, because it's not all of Clackamas.
I thought it was on most of Clackamas.
I could be wrong.
I mean, but just by the votes alone, yeah, we're already.
There were more than, you know, it's like sixty percent of the of the residents are from Clackamas County, so it must be a big chunk of them.
Right. No, absolutely. We have the smallest representation in. So how do you feel, Commissioner Munzer, about that language?
Sounds good. We turned up the first one.
The first, the first question that that we. How do you feel about that language? Okay, all right. Are we good with that?
No, no, okay.
I've been thinking about a nice way to say the second one.
Do you want a nice way, or do you?
Yeah, it can be nice and still be direct. It can say something like, uh, we are concerned uh uh about rumors. That at least one of you uh will be uh running for another office while while serving in this position. Uh can you?
Assure us.
Are you committed? Think you would add, we're concerned that one of you would be running if you were chosen to fill this position.
How committed are you to?
Senate. You know what implies, but.
D twenty-six.
How can you assure us that we, that our district wouldn't lose um that we would continue to get? Adequate representation if you were busy running for a bigger office.
Can you lay our fears that you will be spending most of your time working on another job?
Is that too direct, you guys, or do you want to just lay it out there?
We all know me, I'm fairly direct.
Yeah, I mean, what are your, what are your future plans?
Well, I don't think they can answer that.
So how, so how do you want to say it? And we'll give it to Sophie again.
Okay, uh. The River County is concerned. That at least one of you uh. Is expected to be. Running for statewide office. Can you? How can you lay our fears that you will not have time to live?
Yeah, definitely represent us.
That you will not be fully committed or is is there, I'm just wondering if there's a way we can do this more generic that 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 gives everyone a something.
How about, how about something to the effect of um Hood River County is a a rural county? Compared to the urban nature of, I'm I'm going to get too wordy too. Uh something about uh Hood River County is a rural county, and we are overshadowed by our urban district. And we have needs that need to be represented. Uh and what can you do to assure us that we would be represented?
You could, any politician will dance right through that without answering a thing. That's why I'm trying to be really, really pointed.
We we continually butt our heads up against being part of uh these districts that have the larger populated areas in them. And so we are overshadowed.
We're we're twenty-five thousand people, so we'll never be the majority of the district. That was the same thing we went through. You weren't here when we did our redistricting between our four.
So let's hear it. Let's read it back, and then you'll get to the point where we found her and we'll work on it.
How long are you expecting to stay in this?
Again, you can dance around that. The only thing you can't dance around is uh, you know, the uh.
I I think we got to the point where we need to say, how can you allay our fears that our district will not? Receive the attention it requires.
Because of our senator being focused on another task.
That.
Can you assure us that your attention will be on representing our district and other tasks?
Can you, yes, can you commit to focusing on our? Can you, is that, would that be shorter? Can?
No, I like. Because that's more open.
Okay, how can you lay allay our fears?
That your attention will be focused on representing our district and not on.
Statewide office, running for statewide office.
Or running for other offices, maybe another office.
Right. On a future election? On your campaign?
On a separate campaign.
Well, anyone in this position will be campaigning for reelection, so that's.
For a different, for a separate office. Separate seats.
Just call it statewide, because this is not a statewide office. So if it's not a statewide office, that covers it. So it's an office that's not the one you're in.
Yeah, I'm, is it, we. This position is up for election in twenty twenty-six, correct?
Every four years.
With every four years, I just want to make sure that we've been through two years already, three years already.
Yeah, I think it's been three years.
I should know this.
Sure. Well, anyway, at some point, it is, yes, going to be up for election. And so the question is.
I don't I don't mind that someone's going to be, that in an election year, uh senator or state rep spends their time focusing on getting reelected.
So I think if you say statewide office, which is a different thing than just reelection, you've covered it.
Yeah, so what do we start with? We've been hearing a bunch of rumors.
He assumed office in twenty.
How can you allay our fears? We've we've been hearing a bunch of rumors. How can you allay our fears? That uh uh if you are appointed to this position, you'll be spending your time serving the residents of this district. Rather than running for statewide office.
It's a long question, but it's a good one.
So just to be clear, he assumed office in January of twenty-three.
So twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, started. Yeah, the elections are twenty-six, right. The election would be in twenty-six to appoint someone. So this is.
Except if she does decide to do that, then and resigns the, oh, she wouldn't resign, would she? Okay, so read back what we have, please.
So I got Arthur's post.
Okay.
Given recent rumors, how can you allay our fears that you will serve the residents of this district rather than running for statewide office?
Rather focusing on a run for statewide office.
I like it.
Rather than focusing on a run for statewide office.
Do you want to add the part at the beginning that was your um introduction on your first iteration of it? Which said that this didn't basically apply to all three and said that at least one. Do you want to say that, or do you just want to know about rumors? It only, it only applies to one of the.
Well, the others can say, you know, I will be dedicated to.
Okay.
Serving.
You guys okay with that?
Good answer.
Okay.
Because really, this is the one thing I'm concerned about. I I I don't, I I've never met her, I've never spoken to her. Uh and she may be a wonderful uh person who would be a a fantastic uh state senator for us. But I would ask anybody if I knew that they were planning to run for a statewide job. If if um I I would, that would be a big um concern of mine.
All right, you guys want to hear it one more time?
Sure.
All right.
Given recent rumors, how can you allay our fears that you will serve the residents of this district rather than focusing on running for statewide office?
How can?
I see your brain.
Allay our fears that you won't have time to serve. Because what that says is that we're afraid that she will serve. We need to say.
That was my, I didn't hear that. I I didn't hear that.
You're to allay our fears that you will serve.
Oh.
So we have to say.
I didn't hear that. I corrected in my head. I hate writing things in public. This is still.
Yeah, and it's even harder to dictate again. Yeah, so how can you allay our fears that you won't have time to serve the residents of this district rather than focusing on? Running for statewide office.
There you go.
I think that's going to be the elephant in the room, and I think that if no one else brings that question forward, uh. We should.
Okay.
We want a backup question, because I like your question about about them. Uh and what else I'm starting out to about as a rural community.
Being overshadowed by.
What will you do? It's the same question I asked um um uh uh our our congressman Dexter when she came here. And uh I think it's important to at least get them on the record as promising that, oh, we promise we're going to come to a river all the time, because we love the river and they're great restaurants.
Right. You send your money here.
I've been through this for many years.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, will you make sure that our rural? Areas are not overshadowed by?
Current stones, urban concerns.
Or or it's it's more than that, you know, our our county is a small, is a relatively small portion of of the district. How can you uh? Uh what what can you say to assure us that our interests won't be overshadowed by those? Clackamas County.
That, yes, yeah. How often are you going to come to Hood River?
Commissioner Munzer can help with the food.
Yeah. Tell you where.
Jeff will say, I live here.
How does that one sound, Sophie?
It just sunk in.
Okay, listen.
Oh, that's great.
Hood River County is known to be small in this district. How can you ensure that a rural community such as ours is not overshadowed by urban priorities?
So I, not for me, because there are two mistakes in that um. We're actually, you know, I keep on trying to remind us, we're not a rural district, and it's not the urban concerns I'm concerned about. It's the fact that we're simply, we're a smaller portion of the, we're a smaller piece of the population.
Okay.
So I think if you took out the urban and rural part of that, the piece that I'm concerned about is simply that. We're a small piece of this, we have specific concerns. How can we be assured that you're going to pay attention to us? When you spend all your time just in Clackamas County, so I mean, I wouldn't say it that way, but. She already typed it, yeah.
So overshadowed by, you didn't like urban priorities.
Yeah, so let let me, let me try again. Uh Hood River County uh is. Uh uh will be, is 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 a, is a relatively small uh.
Population.
Part of this district. Uh what can you say to assure us that uh our? Needs and interests will be represented and not overshadowed by uh.
The greater population, the.
The.
The more populated.
More populous, more populous counties than the district.
There you go, more populous counties.
Can you get us our bridge? Is this our backup?
That's kind of what. Because someone already says, you aren't, you're running for governor.
Okay.
Yeah, we should have a backup, because I'm sure.
I like just, can you get, can you just, can you get us a bridge?
I like, just can you get, can you just, can you get us a bridge?
Are you ready? Uh, Hood River County is a relatively small part of this district, how can you ensure that our needs and interests will be represented and not overshadowed by the more populous counties of the district?
Very good, good. Are we good with this?
I think there are three potential questions.
Right, thank you for being our worksmith, Sophie.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think our poor reporter is gonna be struggling, listening to all of us, trying to come up with words. Must be very frustrating to listen to other people trying to compose.
Especially, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we're on to our old business, if there's no more comments on that, and we will, I guess, find out if there's more information, we'll have something in our inbox. Um, so we're to the, um. A section where we're going to consider the county organizational assessment and fiscal sustainability analysis. And decide whether to move forward, approve moving forward with the selection of Baker Tilly to conduct the county organizational assessment, fiscal sustainability analysis, and authorize the county administrator. To negotiate and sign the final contract of services, and so eventually that will be the motion we are looking for. So, bring us up to date.
So, uh, with the, uh, passage of the budget, obviously, we've had, uh, many conversations about county sustainability, and so, um. We had budgeted for the carrying out of an update to our organizational assessment. Um, this, um, the request for proposal was in your packet, and it scoped a project. Which would do a fiscal sustainability analysis coupled with an organizational assessment, the intention was to do a deep dive in looking at our finances. Um, and so there are four things, uh, that it will provide, the county will receive options to a, address fis- fiscal gaps, which include. Uh, expenditure controls and cost shifts. Service delivery model changes, revenue enhancements, and potential service delivery reductions. Um. I think, uh, we had a great team that went through the process of evaluating the eight firms who applied for this. Um, they had come to us with great recommendations in terms of the work that they do. Um, the, uh, activities are scoped to take place, um, by the end of June, so. It will inform our budget process, um, but.
So, who said? At, at the June, we were, we were adopted a budget by then.
So phase one, um, the first phase developing the long range fiscal financial forecast, uh, would take place now through March. The organizational assessment would take place, uh, December through, uh, April, and then the fiscal sustainability plan would be. February through June, um, it's an ambitious timeline, but, um, the hope is that it could, uh, inform our budget process. Um, and, uh, I think the value of having a firm go to work, uh, on this, um, you have a, a lean staff. Um, when you are making recommendations such as service delivery model changes, uh, and service delivery reductions. Um, having a third party who has done the analysis, um, is beneficial. Um, because then, uh, we need to have the relationships with our staff that have been developed through the process. In order to, um, carry out the recommendations. Um, they proposed to do, uh, a number of interviews, uh, which would be, of course, all of our department heads, uh, plus, I, um. A couple of board members who would be, uh, who would be able to inform the process. Um, and, um. I think. The ability to, uh, have this done, have options laid out in a short timeframe, uh. Uh, is really a benefit to where the county needs to go in terms of developing a sustainable plan moving forward. Um, so their, um, their proposal and their scope of work was also, uh, included in the packet. Um, what we also included was, um, uh, Sherry developed a five-year forecast that, uh, basically looked at. Um, taking our budget and where we are today and applying a number of factors, and if you carry that forward five years. It really just demonstrates, uh, what would occur if no action were taken. I think, um, the recommendations that are a part of that five-year forecast are very consistent with what's, um, been proposed. Uh, in this now, analysis, um. They are ready to go, uh. And we're excited to get some work to help. Questions? Concerns?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Sorry. There's it out loud, uh, so, uh. My experience has been that there are firms that focus on doing this sort of analysis for law enforcement, and there are firms that do it for governments in general. Uh, and so I understand that we're doing the full county, including law enforcement. Um, how confident are you in their understanding and ability to address those issues?
They gave us a number of, um, recommendations from other, uh, organizations that they've done this work for, um, that are varied, that were both county and city. Um, they were the one firm that we felt like was really grounded in having worked in Oregon and done this type of analysis in Oregon. Um, I had a conversation with the city of Beaverton and their city manager about. Um, the predicament that they were in and the process that they were, that they went through. Um, and, uh, she highly recommended the in-depth process that they went through. Um, the other thing that, um, would be a basis for this, uh, when I first arrived, um. I had legal counsel go through a process of laying out our departments, um, the statutory authority, and then, um. The contractual obligations, so that document, uh, can be updated to help inform the process. Um, I think the other piece of it is, um, we had, uh, the sheriff is a part of the team, he was very engaged in the process. Uh, in fact, he identified, uh, an area of his budget that was. A duplication of a capital cost and said that could be freed up, we would have to obviously go through the proper process within our budget. Um, to help cover the cost of this analysis, um. We had two firms that we interviewed and, um, we had a great cross-section of our leadership team interview, and I think. Uh, I was taken aback that the team wanted to make sure that, um. We were able to get the full analysis that is needed, and they felt confident and strong. And I do, Sherry obviously was a part of that, Eric is still there, Eric sat in on that process as well. So I think the other part of it is, um, in laying out the analysis, obviously. When they do a deep dive of our finances, uh, they will see, um. The cost, uh, sectors that make up our budget, and so when they talk about doing a, um. You know, an analysis of service, service delivery models. Um, that is the explanation that there are other ways, um, that business may be able to be done. Um, and so those would be put forward as options, so, for example, the other piece aside from what. Services the county is offering is also the analysis of the state's shared services. And those things that, um, the state, uh, can do, but that we have chosen to do hopefully. Um.
Yeah, I guess, so I, I, I'm sold on the concept of having someone come in to do this sort of analysis, so, uh, but I'm, uh. We're going to, they will need to get to issues of delivery of services, which in law enforcement is questions like, how many cars do you have out? At a time, what does your coverage schedule look like?
Right.
Um.
Yes, so that.
Can you do that?
Yes, so we're in the, um. In the, um.
In the financial forecast and the organizational assessment, they will be looking for comparable counties. So that they can go out and analyze the models of how they're doing business to compare to how we do business.
So, for example, they can go to Wasco County and they can talk to Wasco County about what hours of coverage they have, or what sort of, um, um. How many people they have on at any particular time, uh, recognizing Wasco County is a much larger county physically. Um, that same size population.
Yeah.
So you guys know what I'm getting at, right?
Mm-hmm. I do. I'll just say on the side now, uh, in my day job professional career, we, um, I've worked with Moss Adams for a number of years, just more recently Baker Tilly. Um, and have been incredibly impressed, um. It's, you know, it's, it's, it's not a new model necessarily, but they do have a lot of areas of expertise. Um, and, um. Of course, I looked through and of course don't know any of them, because they're, it's a completely different model, but, um. From, from my standpoint and worked with Baker Tilly, they've been excellent.
And I've had the same experience, because we've also used them at our co-op and, uh, Moss Adams is just excellent.
But that's not the recommendation.
Well, it's Baker Tilly, because Moss Adams is now Baker Tilly.
Oh, okay.
So she's her, so.
I understand, I didn't know that.
They, they merged in June.
Okay. Same legal.
So, um, do we have more discussion, or is there a motion to approve moving forward? After which we can continue to discuss it.
I would make, I would make the motion, that motion to move forward with Baker Tilly.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any more discussion?
Really glad that this has happened, you've been asking for it, and you're moving on it. Really looking forward to sustainability. Their finances at the county.
Okay.
This will help.
Okay. So.
So I guess.
Oh, do we have more discussion?
A little, I mean, my, you know. They should hire, hiring consultants on, management consultants is that they, uh. Most of them will reflect back to you what you said to them and charge you for it. Right, um, and the question is, the good ones will actually add something to it, and you learn something and do a better job. And. I'm trying to understand how I know that these folks, that you, you went through a, a lengthy interview process, you know, I, I see things jump out at me like it says, uh. We have a bias towards actions, like, oh, great, you know, it's, you're biased towards action, that's wonderful, that's a meaningless phrase. Um, so, uh, but you folks went through in your arcs here, and Doug, were you involved in this too? No, a little, okay, uh, so. You're confident will learn more than just getting a reflection back of what we tell them?
I think, um. To answer your question, yes, uh, I think what, uh, was shown to us was a financial model that they've developed. That, uh, we can then embed and use that for our processes moving forward. Um, I know in, in many of our discussions with Sherry and going through the budget process. Um, having a system in place that can help us with that budget process. Uh, was an attractive part of this. Um, implementation, when they say, uh, we're biased toward action. You want an implementable plan, and so I think that is what we were looking for, is something that would, uh, give us the information. And options laid out so that choices can be made and we can implement something quickly. And I think based on, particularly my conversation in Beaverton, it gave her the tools she needed to help transition, uh, their entity.
I was very biased, and I felt exactly as you just defined it, going into hiring yet another consultant. And I didn't wanna spend the money, but. We have one full-time accountant, that's plain, you know?
Correct.
There's not a whole lot of space and time to do this level of work. And after we met with Baker Tilly twice. I was sold that we would have a model that management. Could push forward. Where each budget season, we say, oh, this is not sustainable, but we move forward. We don't have enough of an impact doing what we're doing, and we're running out of time. I was sold.
Do you have any more, because we will vote when you're. When you're satisfied that we've had enough discussion.
Um, you know, there's, there's no way to know what comes out of this, but I think, uh, I think the staff has done their job in. And, uh, we asked them to come up with a option, they've come up with what sounds like a, a best option available, uh, and so I'm. I'm satisfied to move forward, I'm not a hundred percent confident that, that this is going to work the miracle. Uh, but I, um, I, I think Steph has done his job in presenting this to us.
And you can be the first to vote then.
Yes.
I, I, I don't, I don't know that, I don't speak for Steph, but I'm not sure Steph would say that this is a miracle.
I don't think it is.
Yeah.
The hard work comes on the other end.
Yeah.
The, the, the recommendations and then the implementation is everywhere.
I just, I mean, my hope is that this gives us the. The group understanding that we need in order to make the policy decisions so that we can move forward with a sustainable budget. And right now, it'd be difficult for us to sit down and say that the five of us agree that. This is what the company needs to do to reestablish sustainability.
That's the plan.
That's the plan.
Very good. All right.
Well said.
Commissioner Ray.
Yes.
Commissioner Weathers.
Yes.
Commissioner Munzer.
Yes.
Children's, yes.
I would suggest.
He already said yes.
I didn't.
He voted, and then.
And that's not, it's still.
Gotcha.
If we have more discussion, do you have to vote the seventh time?
I think so.
Okay.
Yes, Lisa.
All right, so with that, we have concluded our business for tonight, and we will be going into.
It was a decision.
Um. Executive session, we will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS one ninety-two. Six, six, zero, two, E, to conduct deliberations with persons. Designated to negotiate real property transactions.
And we will potentially be taking action when we come back, right?
Once the executive session is complete, the board will come back into regular session to adjourn the meeting.
Oh, so we're not, I thought.
You can't take action, I guess, potentially like action.
I think we should note that we may take action, because.
You have the potential to take action, thank you.
It's just that we have to make it possible for people to get back on to the meeting. Then, we don't usually do it this way, but your notes said.